America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. In fact, we have a full house. Our next order of business would be the approval of the agenda, what is council's...
I move to adopt the agenda as presented with...
Your Honor, I believe you had wanted to add item...
Oh.
Okay. Sorry, Mike.
With the addition of Mr. Wittenberg, is he still here?
Oh.
Under Presentations and...
Item D, Presentations, is our state representative, yes?
And we have two budget items.
Yes.
Refresh my memory.
Two items left over from our last special meeting. The FY sixteen and seventeen general fund budget summary will make item E.
Right.
And item F will make the FY sixteen and seventeen non-general fund budget summary.
Assisted by Mayor.
And your honor, FPV.
We may add on introduction of another new police officer.
Thank you.
Support. Whatever all that was.
Moved by Lennon, supported by Martin. Any discussion on the agenda as modified? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda as modified is adopted. Now moving on to Presentations. First presentation, we're going to take in two parts. Our good police chief, Chief Collins, is here. And in addition to the unit commendations, which he'll do in a moment, I think he is here to proudly introduce one of our new hires on the police force. Is that right, chief?
I am, your honor. The city meeting, we are proud to again present to you Nathan come up here. Had we stated at the last city council meeting, we had a requirement of six officers, very seasoned officers. We're in the process of replacing them. Nathan Bodendorfer is our newest hire. He is number three on the list. Nathan comes as a graduate of Brandon High School in 2004. He started his career in law enforcement with going to open the power of associates degree. He was also got his bachelor's degree from University of Michigan Flint. During that time, he also was a member of the United States Armed Forces Reserve. He did a tour of duty in Afghanistan, fairly well decorated. I won't go through the list to embarrass him. Nathan is adopting badge number 611. That was given up by Officer Steve Carroll. He's got some good shoes to fill, so we would like to present to you Nathan Bodendorfer, our next officer in training. The mayor of Chicago received and activated his license from Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards, and we are happy to have him with us.
Nathan, congratulations.
Congratulations.
We look forward to your service. Appreciate it. Welcome aboard. And now, chief, I think you have some commendations.
I do, your honor. This is an event that occurred earlier this year in February. On February 12th, in the evening hours, the dispatcher Lieutenant P-TAC received an anonymous call from a young woman who was having problems with a neighbor. The neighbor, they began a verbal relationship, they traded phone numbers, and this individual began to text her inappropriately, call her on the telephone inappropriately. She called the Ferndale Police Department for some advice. She was told that she should tell him to stop, give him the ability to stop this type of activities. We asked if we could intervene, and she told us that no, at this time, we prefer, she preferred to try to handle this on her own. She was told what to do if this type of activity continued, and that was the extent of our contact with her that evening, or at that time, rather. Later that evening, at approximately 11:30 that same date, dispatcher Wallerwick received a 911 call from a frantic woman on Woodard Heights stating that she had just returned home, and there was a man in her kitchen. She stated that she noticed that her back door was broken, and that she could see a man inside with something in her hand. Sergeant Spelman, along with Officers White, Blanchard, and Willie quickly responded to the scene. Officer Blanchard was the first on the scene and immediately reported that he heard running and fences rattling in the backyards. Officer Blanchard noticed that the rear window of the home was open. The officers set up a perimeter in the area and began searching the yards and following the footprints in the snow. As they were following the snow, they found all sorts of items that were taken from the home. They located a man down the street on Woodard Heights in the 1400 block, and during the investigation, they discovered they had a prescription bottle that belonged to the homeowner that had been broken into. When the officers entered the home, they found it had been completely ransacked. The suspect turned out to be the neighbor that the young lady had called about earlier in the evening. It was the same folks. He had entered the home, he had taken everything off the walls, he had thrown everything on the floor, he'd emptied out the refrigerator and the cupboards, and he had actually began to flood the home. Through the dispatcher's quick dispatching and information gathering that he had, and the officers' quick response and the perimeter that they set up, the ultimate arrest of the suspect, the department is awarding the officers involved a unit commendation. Please come forward. Officer, where's Officer Willie?
Officer Blanchard is not here this evening.
Officer Blanchard is off this evening, and Officer Willie is out enforcing the laws for the city of Ferndale, so unfortunately he's not here to receive this, but we'll make sure he gets it this evening.
Fair enough.
Great work.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, your honor.
Great, appreciate the great work. Thank you. All right, our next presentation this evening will be the CN grant. And who's going to, Derek, you're going to introduce that item?
I'm going to real quick introduce someone who's going to present it. We're very, feel very pleased to be here tonight. Recently, we applied for a, not a large grant, but a small grant through Canadian National, the railroad, to do some planting improvements to Fair Park, which is immediately adjacent to the railroad. As part of that process, we did receive the grant. We were just notified. I know the council action item talks about it as something we're still waiting to hear on, but we did hear back from them. The grant application was a joint application process with our department, Jill in Parks and Recreation, and Lloyd's team at DPW. It worked out very well. You have a summary of the grant and what we're proposing to do at the park. The person who is actually responsible for applying and following through on that process is Justin Lyons, who is here with us. He is a new planner with the city. Right now, he's working in our department as a part-time planner, and he is one-for-one on grants. So I am going to let him introduce that and talk about it a little bit, and then obviously we're all here to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Good evening, good to see you.
Good to be here. So like Derek mentioned, this was kind of a team effort between Parks, DPW, and then one of our Parks and Recreation Commissioner, Commission members, Robert Primo. We all kind of worked together to make this happen, and so there's a lot of work to be done moving forward, but as my first project for the city, it was kind of good to see how much teamwork is involved and what is going to also be involved moving forward to complete this project, so. So like Derek said, this has to do with the CN railroad, property near there. So the whole goal of the project was to enhance the quality of life for residents along that corridor, revitalizing Fair Park, and then also an adjacent property that is currently owned by CN. So you're probably pretty familiar with these properties, but Fair Park is here in this peach-orange color, just east of Hilton Road, and then to the north is the current CN property that's just an empty space at this point. Currently, this is just what it looks like at the moment. On the left is the empty lot that CN owns. It's been cleaned up a few times over the past few years, but it's pretty much filled with just brush and debris, and we feel like we could do something better with it. Fair Park is on the right. BPW does a great job maintaining that park. There's currently a walkway there, and then also a playground, but as you can see, kind of along the fence here, there's some brush and overgrowth that's really tough to get to because of that fence in a way, so that's another thing we saw that could be improved there. The grant is through Canadian National Railroad, and then they partnered with America and Bloom. They typically give this award to five or six communities each, twice a year. So the grant is worth up to $25,000 to enhance landscapes specifically along CN rail lines. The 50% match is required for the total project costs, and then grant funds are only allowed to be used for purchasing and planting of trees and shrubs, flowers, any supplies and installation related to that, any design services, but it's all about improving and beautifying areas near the rail lines. So our idea for the grant was, why not take Fair Park and expand it and possibly do a community garden as well? So we wanted to upgrade the linear park, more trees, native tree plantings, flower gardens, shrubs, all of that, to make that more of an asset for the neighborhood. Any trees and things like that would also potentially help with natural screening and sound buffer and increase the tree canopy, which is one of the master plan goals. And then also, being that there's a vacant parcel there, just sitting there, not used to its maximum capability, we figured why not turn that into a public space and expand it with Fair Park? And then along with that, in that vacant property, we hope to do a pilot program for a community garden that would be managed by Parks and Recreation. So the city's contribution to matching the 50% is all through in-kind services and supplies. So some of this has already been done in the site design. We're going to be doing some property clearing that DPW will handle a lot of. General planning, water source installation, maintenance, soil, plants, trees, those are all the things that we're going to provide. And one thing to note also, that the grant award is not contingent upon the community garden, so it is our idea, and we think it'll be a great project for that, but you know, if a few years down the line, we decide that the community garden wasn't living up to its potential, then it could also just be park space, and we wouldn't face any consequences from CN on that. So I have a few designs that you'll see. They're not completely final designs, but being a linear park, there's a lot of different things you can do with that, and I feel like we're going to spend the 25K as best as we possibly can. So this is the northern portion of the park, right along Wordsworth. There is a playground currently there, and then this is the fence line that abuts up to the CN rail line that's currently just overgrowth and brush. And so we feel like lining that with a lot of native trees, flowers, plants, will really change the look of that area. We can kind of get into details of design and things like that later, specific plants, but Robert was very helpful with his landscape architect background and picked out a lot of great plants, I think, that make a lot of sense for the area. So this is the second section, the middle section. The walkway goes north-south still, and just really trying to improve all along right next to the rail line. At the bottom portion, this is the southernmost portion, Jewel Street, and we kind of want to do a perennial garden entryway, just as a greeting for people going north to south, just completely change the look and improve it for the neighborhood there. The community garden, we plan on potentially doing 40 to 50 plots, steel-raised plots that kind of align with the industrial area that is there, and then kind of make a sitting area. We've talked about some picnic tables and things like that, so there's room to do quite a bit with that, and we kind of have the flexibility with that within our budget to do a different, a few different layouts of it. This has tentative timeline just because we just were awarded the grant last week, so... But we essentially, we started the application process in December, finished up in end of January, just found out that we were the winners of this grant. We're going to take next month to do the final design components, and then potentially use part of a team of whoever would like to, hopefully partnered with Parks and Recreation Commission and the Beautification Commission, to do a cleanup through clean the Ferndale up. And then eventually in June, we'd like to do a full planting event for anyone who'd like to be involved, really, but with the various commissions. And then potentially in August, open the Fair Park expansion with the community garden component coming next year, after we've had time to talk internally about policies, how the subletting process will work, and all those details to come, which you'll definitely be privy to. But like I said, there was a lot of different parties involved that helps make this a team effort. Robert, and Jill, and Lloyd, and Matt were huge helps in this process, and then we had some really great thank you letters of, or not thank you letters, but letters of support from Eight Mile Boulevard Association, the Ferndale Chamber of Commerce, Ferndale Community Foundation, Oakland County Parks and SEMCOG, and that really bolstered our overall application and I think pushed us near the top, so.
I just wanted to point out one other thing. This really started as a process. We'd met with several residents over in the neighborhood over there about Fair Park, and they talked about the property line with the adjacent ermo facility in CN, and the possibilities of, one, that that's being overgrowth and potentially being pest harbage and some other things, the need to clean that up and clean that out and replant it in a more manageable form that would eliminate some of those concerns. So I'd like to point out that at least a couple of the residents over there really helped us kind of round this into shape, and then we can't say enough, I mean, obviously we wrote it, we don't have any equipment to clean this out or do anything, it's real easy for us to talk about in-kind services, but Lloyd, as always, his team stepped up and said we'd be glad to participate. That helps us not have to come up with any cash for it. And then obviously Parks and Rec. We love this community garden idea. We'd like some time to round it into shape and make sure it works, but the idea to be able to lease out small raised plots that are protected from rodents and turn something that was a potential problem over there, or a creator of a nuisance, into something that is something the community can use and lease, and maybe even something that is expandable in other parks, we're very excited about. So it all started with that, those residents over there, but we're actually pretty excited about it and wanted to thank the others involved as well, so. And we're here to answer anything or any questions you may have.
Council of questions? No, this is great.
Pretty great project, yeah.
Maybe one question around, so, because I wrote down that Parks and Rec would manage the community gardens, but I heard you say lease two people, so, because I was thinking staff-wise, I mean, what's the, we're already pretty tightly staffed in Parks and Rec. How do you see that working?
We're still kind of discussing that. We've kind of been looking at other communities, big and small, to see what their best practices are for that, and I think it'll probably, it'll work itself out in the next few months or so when we discuss, we discuss it, but...
Yeah, we've spoken with Jill, and we don't expect it to be much of a burden. What they're very good at is managing teams and resources and fields, and we've looked into some other communities, like Justin said, on how they do it. We expect it to be a very simple process. That being said, we also understand there's going to have to be a serious amount of ground rules, monitoring, and then obviously maintenance of that area to make sure that it's not abused, that it doesn't get unsightly. Like we said, the grant isn't contingent on that. We're hoping to incorporate it, and so far in talking with them, they don't think it's going to be extraordinarily or extra burdensome on their staff, but obviously, if it is, we'll either have to scrap it or move to a different idea. And we realize that that's a possibility before spring of next year as well.
Because, yeah, I mean, community gardens are a wonderful idea. They can also, as you just said, they can get out of hand, they can get unsightly if they're not managed properly, so. So when you have a final sort of plan around that, can you come back and let us know what the plans are for that?
Absolutely, definitely. Yeah, if we think it's going to work, we're going to be glad to bring it back and show it off a little bit.
All right.
In the near term, at least, that unused property, we'll still see all of the tree and flower and those types of improvements, so it'll look much different than it does today.
Yeah, no, congratulations. It's an exciting project, and I appreciate your work on it.
Thanks.
Thank you. So you don't need anything from us this evening, it's just a...
Nope, we just wanted to roll it out. We had planned on presenting it, and it just was an added bonus that we had heard last week that we were actually awarded the grant as well.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you. Next presentation is the Eight North Laverneoy Property Sale and Conceptual Design, and Derek, I'm guessing that's you as well?
It is. This is another project we're glad to be here to discuss, and one that fits within the city's master land use plan and proposed future development plans, especially for the Laverneoy corridor. The city currently owns two non-contiguous pieces of property directly north of Eight Mile on the west side of Laverneoy. Those pieces of property are split by a privately owned piece of property that's currently developed with a single-family residence. We were approached not too long ago by the design team, and they had gotten the option on the existing piece of property in between the two cities pieces, and wanted to talk to the city about what the master plan and what the city wanted to see developed on those parcels. Based on those discussions, they have developed a conceptual plan that includes the redevelopment of the two city-owned pieces. They have since presented that conceptual plan to the Planning Commission, where it was very well received, to kind of understate it, and they like the opportunity to present that concept to city council tonight, because if it is going to go forward, it would be based on the sale of the properties to the development team. So they are here to present that project tonight, talk about what the process is going forward, and then seek any additional input from council regarding either the sale of the property or the proposed concept. So with that, I'm going to introduce...
And so just to be clear, you're just presenting the concept to us tonight, so that they have an understanding of whether a council is generally supportive or not.
Correct.
We're not selling property tonight.
Correct.
We're not negotiating all that rest of...
Correct.
Gotcha.
Tonight is just the concept. They presented the design options to the Planning Commission. Once it was so well-received, we thought before going any further and entering into negotiations or starting negotiations, we would bring it forward tonight and see what the council's thoughts were. If it's well-received tonight, then we'll move into those steps and be back again in front of the Planning Commission in short order.
Has there been, and forgive me, I don't know exactly always the timeline for these things, have residents in that neighborhood been, would there be any, they would have been notified for the Planning Commission phase?
They will be. We have reached out to the Dale's Neighborhood Group, and the applicant or the development team has, is willing and is wants to schedule a meeting with the Dale's Neighborhood Group over there, and the neighbors immediately adjacent. They were not made it noticed for the Planning Commission because it was a discussion item. If it were to come forward, that would be a public hearing process, and all of the neighbors would be noticed, both at the Planning Commission and the city council level. So with that, I will bring those guys up and let them...
Before we do, can I ask a clarification question? I should know this. What's at the corner of Eight and Laverneoy?
Yeah, the Shell gas station. Correct. It's immediately north of the Shell gas station. Two pieces of property split by the one they have control over.
Thanks, just helps me visualize it.
Did you tell them that we had bigger property over at Eight and Pinecrash?
Depending on how well they're received, I'm guessing they might be interested.
All right. We know now.
You know that? All right.
Mayor, council members, good evening.
Good residents.
My name is Paul Miley. I am the managing partner for Nexus Capital. We are the developer, we're the lead on this project. I just wanted to come and introduce myself to the council and to the city, and just to reiterate how excited we are to be able to get to this point. We've been, you know, basically putting this together systematically over the course of the last, I'd say, four or five months, and a lot of time and energy has gone into this, and we're excited to be here, and we're excited to present this to you, to open the discussion with the opportunity and the possibility of moving forward. Secondly, I would like to commend and compliment the city with regards to the talent of the staff. This has been nothing short of a smooth process. As a business owner and as a planning commissioner for municipality myself, I think I have an ability to appreciate logistics and inner workings of these types a little bit better than the average person, and you have a dynamite group, and we're excited to work with them, to continue to work with them with the possibility of moving forward.
Appreciate you on that.
So, thank you, thank you. So again, I just wanted to introduce myself, and I would also like to introduce the members of the Eight North team from Design Team Plus. We have Ralph Nunez and Harold Rumlinger, as well as John Gaber from Williams-Ratner and Plunkett, who is our attorney for the PUD component. So I'll hand everything over to Mr. Nunez.
Excellent. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, and nice to see you again. Got a different hat on. Last time I was here, it was with Lawrence Tech and the students, so now we have to show them how to do it, so. The project was...
And you guys did a really nice job with that, by the way.
Thank you very much.
I hope the students got as much out of it as we did. We really appreciate that.
They're still talking about it, and they've all reached out, and they still want to be involved if the project goes forward to the Park and Recs Department, so those that don't have a job might be looking to help on this.
All right.
So, let me go through the presentation. As we stated earlier, or as was stated, you have Eight Mile to the south, Laverneoy here, parcels that the city controls is the northern piece, the southern piece, and right now, Paul has control of the single-family home right now. You have the gas station located just at the south of us. There's a barrier wall along this area, fence through here. There are existing trees on site. If we go to the opposite side, you can see that zoning is the mixed-use development as far as in the purple. You have the C2 through here and residential. One thing to notice is that the residential lots are some of the largest, deepest lots that you have in the city, which is advantageous for what we're proposing. You look at this, this is the site plan. It consists of three buildings, 30 units total between the three. There are a small footprint, roughly about 65 feet by, or 68 by 68. We have a one-way access on the north, parking on a diagonal, parking underneath the back of the building, basically one and one-half cars on there. We're proposing an evergreen hedge row along for the neighbors at that point, and if we go there, this is roughly what it looks like. This is modular construction. The panels would be designed by our office and be manufactured in Michigan, keeping businesses here. It is, consists of basically five stories. Commercial on the first floor, parking in the rear underneath. They have two one-bedroom units on each floor and one two-bedroom unit on the floor. The center is basically our elevator, our stairwell, also where we would have bike storage internally for the residents. On the top floor is a little different. These would be all residents for three. You have a two-story, or two-bedroom unit on the top. You have an open patio space, and then the one unit has been converted to an exercise meeting area for each building residents, as far as we have there. We're looking at doing bioswells along the front, doing the bumpouts to coincide with the future plans for Laverneoy right now, with the bike lanes have been painted in there, but make that more permanent, do street parking for the commercial access to it, also additional bike lanes, bike parking for visitors that come back and forth as we go forward. I'm not going to go through this, but we've read through the PUD requirements. We adhere to all of those and exceed those requirements in the ordinance. This is a larger plan showing it. North is toward your right, showing the development as it comes through and around and back out. We have separation about 20, a little over 20 feet in between the buildings, so residents enter from the side, commercial enters in the front, kind of activate the streetscape, potential bus stop through here, as well as sitting areas to encourage people to walk back and forth, the evergreen all along there, and then also bioswells, which would be in these landscape areas in the rear, as well as along the front, so we can filter out that stormwater. We did a number of studies, one showing the proposed building on the bottom is what we're showing right now. If the units, as far as the lots were developed, this is what could be developed here, a hip roof, and at the measurement is 35-foot mid-height, but actually with the gabled roof, it almost gets to about a little over 50 feet 10 inches. Our building is 50 feet, I believe, eight, something along that line. So we've been looking at that. We're concerned about the residents that are single-family homes in the rear of us. There are a lot of large trees in not only their backyard, but in here right now. We're proposing a landscape buffer between both parties. On that, as Derek had mentioned, we have introduced this to the Planning Commission. We had reached out to the neighborhood to visit with them as well. We also did a shade study to look at this, so in June, we did the equinox in June, and December, the shortest day, how long is day, and the shortest day of the year, showing at nine o'clock, this is what the shade is. If we go back as far as at noon, you have the shade here at basically three, it's over here, and basically at six, it doesn't really matter. And then during the wintertime, we've gone through that. So right now, the homes that are here, that are underneath all these trees, aren't really going to be affected by the shade on that, but we're concerned of how that would look for them. Kind of the buffer, as far as what we're looking at, we're moving it back, so we have a 15-foot landscape area in the rear with additional trees. And we go to the units. Basically, first floor, commercial, parking in the rear. As we go up to the next one, basically, this is a typical for three, second, third, and fourth floor, so one bedroom, one bedroom, and two bedroom. You see the center core for our elevator and stairwell. And then the top floor is what I... And then the top floor is what I mentioned. We have a two-bedroom unit and then the one bedroom's converted to exercise, kind of entertaining area for the neighbors as well as the rooftop garden and then access to it. And then the elevations. We have the street elevations through here. The designs of it have been carefully designed so that if you're looking out, there's a screen panel so that you can have a sense of privacy in your home. There are nine-foot ceilings on the, in the bedrooms and in the living rooms on through here, so we were cognizant of basically the views from this to the other neighbors. We're looking at right now and investigating the possibility of, we went through a checklist for LEED, not necessarily wanting to pay the dollars for that, but we went through there and we can meet that with what we've designed as far as this building. We're still looking at a couple different certifications as far as, and also the Site V2, which is a site initiative for, it's kind of a LEED light. So we're trying to look at that. Do it green for the right reasons, not necessarily for the plaque. And so that's really what we've got. We did show this to the planning commission. They had some good comments. We've taken those to heart. We do have, we want to have the meetings with the neighborhood group as well as the adjacent neighbors and continue to want to work for the city. So thank you very much.
Very good.
Be sure of done your homework.
Try to. If I make the students do it, I've got to do my homework as well.
You've got to do it yourself, yeah. By example, exactly. If everything goes according to plan, what is your timeline?
As soon as possible.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's basically what we would do depending on what your pleasure is tonight. If we get an affirmative, then we start the whole process over from scratch with the PUD. So we go in with the full package of architecture, site planning, go through the planning commission. Prior to that, I want to make sure that we meet with the neighbors first, so we have their input, so we can make sure that they've been heard, but then go through the review process, then come back as far as with your approval at that point.
Very good.
Derek, did you have-
Just a couple of things. The primary reason we would use a PUD in this is, and I think Ralph did a good job showing it, it's very comparable in height to what the existing zoning district allows if that project were to be built similar to others with a gabled roof. Because they are going with a flat roof and to get the activated street front with the commercial on the front, they are going to exceed the height requirement of the district by about eight feet or 10 feet. Plus, with the use of city property in there, we felt that it was appropriate that with the PUD, that city council be the final approving authority. The planning commission is certainly involved, but unlike a permitted use, this requires the additional two public hearings, both at the planning commission and city council level, and some additional controls that would not normally be associated with a development if it were to be developed under the existing zoning ordinance. So we felt with the proximity of the neighbors and the involvement of city property that both of those were important. The development team has agreed to go forward with the PUD with no commitment on the city's part upfront. They are willing to go through that process. If the city council does not have any huge issues tonight, the next steps would be the submittal of that agreement and the submittal of a purchase offer for the property for us to start to review and bring back.
Excellent. Good. Other comments or questions? Just a couple. I appreciate the fact you did, went to the trouble to do a shade study. I think that's great. But on the other side, and I may be asking this completely out of my own ignorance, what about light pollution? You said it doesn't matter at 6:00 PM. It kind of does with all the lights and stuff and people actually living there. I mean, is there a way to estimate what that's going to look like with your planned hedge natural boundary?
I can comment from an ordinance standpoint, they're required to zero out the residential property line, which means they are not allowed by ordinance to project any foot handles across the residential property line.
Okay.
So they will have to meet that ordinance standard by shielding and directing all light back internally to the site. Does that mean it's not going to have some commercial lighting? Of course not. It's like any other development. But they're not allowed to project it across that residential lot line.
Okay, great. And Paul, is it, I'm sorry? Would you mind carefully giving us some background on Nexus Capital, like what you've worked on, some projects that you've done in the past and what your background is?
Absolutely. Nexus Capital is the, was basically created for the purpose of accomplishing this end of the development. Personally, I am a real estate broker, a real estate professional. I've been one for probably almost 10 years now. I've been in the real estate industry. What I do is niche in the sense that I'm a consultant as well. My core business is a company called Falcon and Associates that does business as, under Falcon Realty. And what our niche is, we deal exclusively with income-producing investments. So I have an extensive amount of experience in dealing with investors, raising capital, and implementing. The actual brokerage license really is to serve as the transaction coordinator, the real consultant component is really where, you know, I earn my money, if you will. And additionally, I'm also a planning commissioner for the city of Highland Park. I've been one for a couple of years, so, you know, I have an understanding with regards to how the, you know, the operations and the zoning ordinance and all the things of the sort and the concerns with respect to citizens and how all of those inner workings go. This is my first development project on this scale. I do, I have been recruiting, excuse me, a couple of key partners that will come along. Brown and Schroder has come along as a partner for the construction, construction management component, and I'm also looking to bring other developers that have an experience of developing and owner operating. So, you know, in addition to Design Team Plus and their experience as well as, you know, under the guidance and the advice of Williams-Ratner and Plunkett, we feel like we have a strong team that will, you know, basically put together a type of project that will, you know, will be something that will be community in orientation and something that the city can be proud of.
Great, thank you so much.
To the mayor?
Yes.
Well, I just think this project is full of win and I think it's going to look great in the neighborhood. I'm part of the Dale's group as well, so you'll be talking to me and at the planning commission. I have a couple of questions for you about work for housing affordability and what type of rents are you going for for this type of, for this project? And do you need, are you going to be asking the city for subsidies? Just to get that out of the way.
To answer the latter question, no. Basically where we are, you know, we're in the process of still establishing a concrete budget. We have a pretty good idea with respect to where we are on the high end. Once we get a green light to move forward, assuming that we will, then we are in a position to really start to establish what the low end will be. Ultimately, to answer your question, we don't know exactly because, you know, the investment, you know, with my investment partners, we have to generate a specific ROI. What I can tell you is you, the city of Ferndale is in a beneficial position because as a real estate professional, I can tell you, everything that's going on in Midtown and Downtown or in 7.2, as they say, you're looking at a 97% occupancy and residential space is leasing at $2.05 a square foot and counting. The last market study that I, you know, basically put together, it's a poor man's market study, just on my own research with respect to rental rates in the city of Ferndale, you're looking at about $1.56, $1.56 cents per square foot. So the closest that I can give you to an honest answer, it will be somewhere in between there. And at $2 a square foot, you know, you're looking at a specific higher end, so we hope to be somewhere, we're targeting the shoot at about $1.65, $1.70 per square foot, which would, you know, be about, you know, market rate for this area, given the fact that you're on such an uptick. But again, it's really going to come down to, you know, establishing a budget and making the numbers make sense for, you know, for the investment partners and for the project as a whole.
I understand that you're looking forward to that and you still need to crunch the numbers, but I'm going to be looking for a percentage for market, or I'm sorry, for affordable housing in Detroit and greater Detroit, 7.2. They're really putting aside 20% of the units for affordable housing, so I would like to look at that possibility because we want to create an affordable housing policy going forward is through our master plan update. It'd be great if we could explore what that would look like with your project. Not, it may not work out, but we need to try.
We'll definitely take that into account and, you know, basically keep that in mind as we put together the numbers moving forward.
And I also know your own transit line, so that makes sense too.
But I'd like to add too, in talking about what the design of the project is, we've known for quite some time and our target is, the city of Ferndale has, probably its most noticeable gap in housing is for 18 to 30-year-olds or 21 to 30-year-olds or 35-year-olds, and then again from 55 to 75. We have an extreme shortage of units for both for those, that starter, student or young professional family, and then the aging-in-place population who wants to stay and maybe wants to turn over their single-family home. This falls right in that niche, both in price and design, so we think it fits right in that, in that range for the city of Ferndale.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, these are condos, not rentals?
No, these are apartments. These are apartments.
Oh, these are apartments, these are rentals.
Absolutely, these are apartments.
Oh, all right, all right.
There's a pent-up demand for rentals and so this project helps us satisfy that and hit the bookends of the demographics that you just talked about.
Absolutely.
Other questions?
No, I just have a comment. I think this is a great project. I hope it comes to fruition. We've, I hope you get, received better in that neighborhood than vertical construction was received in the downtown area, but I would really love to see this project come through.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No, I know we don't vote on it, but I'll add my voice, I'm supportive of moving forward. I think that's the direction we're looking for.
Certainly.
I as well, and, you know, that corridor, the South Laverne corridor in Ferndale is one that we've put some attention to. We've done the bike lanes, we've done other kinds of streetscaping, and we intend to try to continue to. And this, to me, fits right along the lines of what we're trying to put there. So we hope to continue to upgrade and redevelop that area and this, to me, you know, if everything goes well, would be a great complement to that, so thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and finally, our state representative, Robert Wittenberg, is here and we'd like to give him an opportunity to tell us what's going on in Lansing, if he wants, if he wants to.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's exciting to see what's going on here, really is, so thank you for letting me be here to speak. Just a brief update, just more or less wanted to come here actually to see what's going on. It's always good to know what's going on in the community. Also remind people to reach out to me if they have questions or they need anything from, you know, their state government. So I don't remember if I was here last month, I don't remember the last time I was here, but March was Reading Month and had the pleasure of going throughout four different school districts that are part of the 27th House District, so Ferndale School District, Hazel Park, Berkeley and Oak Park. Got to read to 755 students, so that was a lot of fun. Some of the questions were really interesting, they kept me on my toes. It was from preschool through third grade, so, and read here in the Ferndale School District as well, which was great. One thing, if, I don't know if some of you saw, but maybe people at home saw as well, there was, there were these adoption bills that were being pushed through by the Republicans, something that I was strongly opposed to. I had an op-ed in the Free Press, I spoke to the floor, on the floor about it, where these adoption, these religiously affiliated adoption agencies that get funding from the government, they get funding from the government and then they can pick and choose who they work with. So they can discriminate and take government funding. So something that I strongly opposed, unfortunately it went through, you know, I tried to tell them if there's a vetted, qualified adult who's willing to adopt, why would you put any barriers? You know, it's about getting kids into loving homes. And so that was something unfortunately that went through. That will be sent over to the Senate. I don't know what's going to happen there. I wouldn't be surprised if it goes through there, but I hope that the governor has some sense to veto it if it gets all the way to his desk. A few other bills I'm working on personally, we are working on a package of bills for security guards, we, actually for private security guards here in the state, they don't have to have any kind of training, and that's something, working on a bipartisan manner to get that accomplished. So I'm working with some of the Republicans and seems to be well-received, so hopefully that's something we can get through. Coffee hours, we held some coffee hours, I had one here at the Ferndale Library, had a wonderful turnout, it was great, it was great to see so many people. Every month, again, there's seven different cities that are part of the 27th House District, so try to rotate every month to go to at least two of the cities and also go to, you know, make one of those stops at a library, want to try to support our public libraries. So we should be back here in Ferndale in the next couple of months, but encourage people to go on my website, it's wittenberg.housedemes.com, wittenberg, W-I-T-T-E-N-B-E-R-G dot housedemes.com. Sign up for the e-newsletter. It'll give you updates on what's going on in the community and it'll let you know when we're having coffee hours. And so, again, encourage people to go there, also to reach out to me if you have any questions, if you need anything, you know, concerns, suggestions, please, please reach out to me. I'll give the number, phone number's 517-373-0478. I gave the website, email's robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. So just want to encourage people to reach out and engage in the process. And with that, I will move to May 5th, there's a ballot proposal, and want to make sure everyone knows and make sure everyone gets out to vote. I could go into it, I won't, I'll save you from that, but if anyone does have any questions on kind of where I stand or my thoughts on the proposal, please reach out to me. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair, if you have any insight and if it's something you want to take back and respond to, that's totally fine, but I'm really concerned lately, especially around our schools, that we've heard about the legislation that allow gun owners to openly carry in gun-free zones and particularly with additional training, the concealed weapons allowance to carry in gun-free zones. And there's been several local instances where people have done that to make a demonstration point. And is that still, is that legislation moving or is that still?
It hasn't been, I think it was introduced in the Senate, I don't know for sure. I can tell you this, I don't think there should be guns in schools at all.
No, no, I'm concerned that it goes, you know what I mean, how it progresses, that we, whatever we can do to voice even an active opposition to that.
Sure.
Like Mike Green, that-
That's correct. So his idea is just that you can't open carry, because right now there's an issue of either open carry or concealed, and I guess currently right now you can open carry, and he wants to make it so that you can have a concealed weapon there, but, I mean, I would prefer not to have any guns in the schools.
No, I agree 100%.
So it hasn't been introduced in the House yet. We have not seen it come through the House floor now, whether it's in a committee, I can, you know, get back to you on that and let you know, but-
More directly, whatever we can do, if you need a resolution to help oppose that or whatever we can do to help support that, because it seems to be picking up steam and I know it's come up in a number of different forums and-
Yes, I know, and here, just in Royal Oak, also in Ann Arbor.
Right.
So I have, I've seen this happen far too often, so.
Yeah, so whatever we can do to help support it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Other comments, questions of our rep? Appreciate your leadership on the adoption bill, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having me. I'll see you all soon.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right, our next item of business is a public hearing, and the public hearing is to discuss the property assessed Clean Energy, or otherwise known as the PACE District. Derek took off. Is someone going to introduce?
He's probably talking-
I know we've discussed this before, but is there an introduction of this?
He's probably talking to his, I don't know, Mellon, can you talk on it or can we go grab him? Can you go grab him? He's probably talking to-
Derek took off.
Sorry, he's the-
That's all right.
He ups on this, sorry.
We're not approving his budget.
Yeah, that's right. Jenny, can you go with Derek?
Derek, you thought you were done for the night?
I didn't.
I'd just like you to introduce, if you will, the public hearing on the PACE District before I open it up to public comment.
I apologize for that. They had some questions and we were trying to go through them. As council is aware, previously proposed to city council was the establishment of a PACE development district which encompasses the entire city of Ferndale. The PACE district is designed to allow for creative financing for sustainability projects associated with redevelopment of commercial buildings, old industrial buildings, functionally obsolete buildings. There's no strings for the city, but the establishment of the district does allow private financing to finance sustainability components for redevelopment of these projects and allows the city to place a special assessment on the project or on the property, ensuring that the private financier gets their money back for the additional costs. It doesn't cost the city anything, but the district does have to be established through public hearing to allow our assessing office, when these projects are financed, to place the special assessment on them. the special assessment on them. So we've had a couple of discussions on that, it's been facilitated through our department along with Lean and Green Michigan, which is a nonprofit that works and helps establish the reports and the process. The planning commission has seen the report, has seen a draft resolution, they did pass the resolution of a tent at a previous meeting, and by the requirements to establish the district, you must hold a public hearing, and then we've also included a resolution in your packet that would establish the district. So unfortunately, Lean and Green couldn't be here tonight, but I am available to answer the questions as best as I can. There is a public hearing requirement, and then obviously the resolution is included in your packet.
Very good. So with that, I would like to open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone who would like to address council on the property assessed Clean Energy District proposal that is before us? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion, and I will ask council, what is your preference on this?
May I just ask a clarification question? So the city being involved, you said there's nothing out of pocket for us, is that, are we in a position to act as the liability carrier if the company defaults?
No, not anymore so than we would under normal foreclosure, tax foreclosure, and resale or auction process through the county. The special assessment would be required to be paid back through that auction process, like any other lien or encumbrance on the property. We are not beholden to pay that back if the property owner's default, or the property is foreclosed, either through mortgage foreclosure or tax foreclosure. So there's no encumbrances or no responsibility on the city's part.
Great, thanks for the clarification question.
So, other comments, questions?
I've said this before, I'll say it again, to me this is a no-brainer. It benefits everyone.
I just wanted to say that the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission is the one who want, the group that wanted to move this forward, and business owner Chris Johnson has asked for this, and as well as city council, was on our goals, what, since 2012, to create a PACE program. And one of the reasons it's taken so long is that the PACE program evolved statewide under Lean and, Lean and Green?
Lean and Green.
Lean and Green Michigan. So I appreciate Derek and your staff for really pushing this forward and making it happen. So on that note, I move that city council adopt the PACE resolution to establish a property assessed Clean Energy District in partnership with Lean and Green Michigan in an effort to support energy efficiency improvements on commercial properties within the city of Ferndale.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Pollocka. Any other discussion, questions on this item?
No, I would just add my voice of support to this, I think this is a great program.
Very good. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members, Pollocka?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted, appreciate it. All right, our next agenda item is a call to audience, I appreciate everyone's patience as we have gotten through a couple of lengthy things before a call to audience, but call to audience is your opportunity to come speak to council on anything that's not on the agenda, because you can speak to that when we get to that part of the agenda. You get three minutes, please state your name and your address, and anything that's on your mind for three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, and this will be short and sweet. I'm Suzanne, I'm the chairperson of the Ferndale Beautification Commission. Later on in the agenda tonight, you're considering the appointment of three new members, which will bring us up to seven, which finally we'll have a full commission. So what I'm here to announce is, we are having a new event on April 25th, from 11 till 1, and it's called Perennials, Can You Dig It? And we are going to have it at Blooms, April 25th, Saturday. One of our guest speakers is Jan Coppola Bills, from Two Women and a Hoe, and she will, which is a great name.
You guys just sit around thinking up names like that, don't you?
So she'll be there, plus we're going to have other experts, it'll be fun, refreshments. And then also I want to announce that we are going to have a spring perennial exchange this year. People are a little more enthusiastic about getting in the dirt in spring, so that too will be at Blooms on May 16th, from 11 until 2. It's the same day as Clean the Ferndale Up, so as long as people are out, it's just a couple blocks away, so, and that'll be fun, we have raffles, prizes, literature, expert advice, vendors, and it's bring a plant, take a plant, but if you don't have any plants, still show up, because you'll get something from it, and we always have extra. I think that's about it. Oh, if you need information on our events, our Facebook site is Ferndale Beautification, and if you would like to volunteer, or maybe be a vendor for our perennial exchange, you can message us on Facebook, or send an email in at ferndalebeautification@gmail.com.
Excellent.
So I hope to see everybody there, it'll be fun.
Thanks Suzanne, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Steve Johnson, I am one of quite a few residents of Autumn House, which is operated by the Ferndale Housing Commission. We would bring our concerns to the Ferndale Housing Commission, however, as noted in a document, which I've brought one copy of, we have had some trouble communicating with the Ferndale Housing Commission. So we are coming to the city council, and we are bringing concerns that should be, I would say, taken care of by the Ferndale Housing Commission. One of them, for example, is an issue with air conditioning in the, as far as I know, in Autumn House, possibly may also be an issue in Whittington West. We have residents in the Autumn House that are dealing with medical issues related to breathing. So there should be, it would seem, air conditioning available to residents of Autumn House. I personally am not in a requirement of such a need, but people who are in need of air conditioning should have it. And I'm not necessarily saying that they would not have to pay for the electricity involved, that is another issue, but the system should be available. The handbook that is offered to residents of Autumn House specifically states that we are not allowed to have window air conditioners, which is, doesn't make any sense to me. However, there is a question as to whether a central air conditioning system is actually in existence in the Autumn House building, that is something that apparently needs to be clarified. So that question is rather complicated, but I believe it needs to be resolved. There is another issue regarding...
Close to your three minutes, so...
Okay, thank you. There is another issue with respect to trash in the front parking lot, there's no trash barrel. So we would say that, I would say that it would be a good idea to have a trash barrel so that we can dispense with trash in the front parking lot. So that would be the essence of my issues.
And Mr. Johnson, please know, we each got a copy of the letter, so I appreciate it, with the additional issues that were raised in here, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, council, may I remain? My name is Jennifer, I'm also a resident of Ferndale. And I think, we can't really put this in a nutshell, because it's a lot of issues that we're dealing with, with the low income, and also with Section 8. So one of my issues are, when we, when people approach, because Deborah Wilson is not there now, as you guys know, and I don't know how she got all of these prizes, but the place is in a horrible position, and I don't know how she got 90% of approval, when they didn't come and talk to us. And you, the councilman, that we vote in, because I'm, you know, I vote Republicans and Democrats, so if you're a Republican, I put you, if you're a Democratic, I also put you there. Anyhow, so, I mean, like, it's horrible, we live in a horrible, deplorable position, where it's like roaches in the building, the building is leaking, you know, and when you approach the people who are in charge, they don't give us a proper response. And I just heard all of this writtenness coming to Ferndale Housing, Ferndale City, but what about the low income? What about the people that also helped to put you guys in this position? So we also count as people, and that is not happening in the Ferndale Housing. So instead of you guys sitting up there, we would like you guys to actually have a tour of the building, and see what it's like to live in these conditions. And I know that you guys are not living in roaches, you guys are not living in festive places, but that's what the people, the poor income, are living in. And one more thing is that, I'm so nervous right now, I don't know...
You're doing great. Wonderful.
But, and then to behalf of a lot of members here, who, you know, I don't know if they want to speak on the behalf of that, but I feel like if we can call, because this is a short three minutes, and you can't put everything in three minutes, but if we can have a day where we can meet you guys, and let you guys know what is really going on, we will appreciate that. To the mayor of the city, and to all the council people, we need help, and we, that's why we are here, that's why it's so full, because we're here. And when Deborah Wilson was there, we couldn't even speak, she didn't allow us to even come to the meetings. So now that she has, now that she's not there, you know, and you guys can hear our voices, we want you guys to actually work on it, because when you guys need a vote, you come to us for that vote. So now we are coming to you, that you can do something with this living condition that all of us are living in. So if I can, if you guys can make a day for that, we will be happy to sit down and let you know what is going on in all the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I'm sorry, could I?
Oh, yeah.
What building do you reside in?
500 East Nine Mile.
The Autumn House.
The filthy one over there, thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Evening, my name's Bob Day, I'm an attorney at Legal Aid in Detroit, and I've been working with tenants of Ferndale Housing Commission since last July. When I first got involved, the reason I got involved was because folks with vouchers through the Ferndale Housing Commission who were living in Detroit, and in good housing in Detroit, were being forced to move, and told they had to move even though the housing was decent. I've been doing legal aid work representing tenants for about 20 years, dealt with housing commissions all over the state, I never heard of such a thing, right? Because I went to my client's house, it was a nice house there at Libranui Finkle area, but new construction after a tornado had gone through. So my client and I came to Ferndale Housing Commission last July to have a meeting with Deborah Wilson, to ask for a meeting, she called the police to have us arrested. Now, like I said, 20 years, I'm an old man, I've been doing this a long time, and as soon as that happened, I knew Ferndale Housing Commission was a disaster, something crazy was going on. The policy was racist, but even worse than the racist policy of forcing people to move out of Detroit when they liked their houses in Detroit, was this idea that tenants, people with vouchers, their attorneys couldn't come and talk to people in the housing commission about issues of concern. So we, as a group, went to the board meeting, and the board went into a closed session, they went into a locker room and locked the door, and wouldn't allow us to speak. And then I started to meet tenants from the Autumn House, and from Whittington, who said, oh yeah, that's the policy, we've never been allowed to speak at a Ferndale Housing Commission meeting. And so this place has been run like a prison, and I'm not exaggerating, that's what's happened. And I don't think people understand how extreme this has been, and the contempt that's been shown for the tenants, and the voucher holders, and the people who live there, not allowing them to speak, not allowing them to be heard, not allowing meetings, not allowing discussions, it's really been a disaster. And it comes down on the whole city of Ferndale, because the city council has responsibility for that board, and that's Deborah Wilson's board, and still her board. And the managers at Ferndale Housing Commission are Deborah Wilson's managers, and they're still there, right? We fought so hard to get a voucher restored for my one client, we were successful, they said they would, they passed the resolution saying we're going to change that policy, right, forcing people to move out of Detroit. Another client of mine, they said, we'll restore your voucher, but now Jennifer Monday, who's responsible for the voucher, says, oh no, we're not going to honor that. And the board, the Ferndale Housing Commission board, passed the resolution, we were right there, and they said restore the voucher, but now they're saying, she moved, my client moved in, based on that, she moved back to her house, now they're saying we're not going to honor that. So the tenants have been organizing, this is the glorious thing, this is the good thing, is the tenants are standing up and organizing, they're not going to be treated like they live in a prison anymore, but when they put up their signs to have a meeting, somebody from the Ferndale Housing Commission comes around and takes them down, right? So it's still that kind of regime, and that Ferndale Housing Commission board has to go, it's Deborah Wilson's board, they can't be trusted, right? They've lied to us, they've lied to the tenants, and the managers at Ferndale Housing Commission are Deborah Wilson's managers. As you all know, Deborah Wilson was arrested for breaking into tenants' apartments and stealing their prescriptions, right? This abuse of authority is something that is so extreme, that it has to be dealt with, not just with Deborah Wilson, she pled guilty, she's gone, they gave her $130,000, right? So they can give her $130,000, but they can't deal with the problems that these tenants are having, on issues of roaches, rats, real basic stuff, right? And so there's got to be a transformation here, and we're asking that the city council get involved and take a stand with these tenants who are out here, and their supporters, and their supporters in the community, and they got a lot of support, because people are starting to say Ferguson to Ferndale. Ferguson is the center of racism in this country for the violence that's been perpetrated, and there are international articles now being written about Ferguson to Ferndale because of the racist policies that have happened to these tenants here. So we're asking you to take some action on that.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? I'm Rhonda Rogers, I'm proud of Ferndale, I'm one who just happened to be a voucher holder. There's a policy, far as any type of record, criminal record, or therefore of seven years. I applied, I added my son, yes, he was in a situation, clear record, over 10 years, and Deborah Wilson, and Vicki, Emily Vicki, denied me for my voucher, with the explanation of the letter that she sent me stating that he didn't put down what his situation was, in which he did. He wrote down what his record was. But due to the fact that they did this credit, on his report, to see if he had a record, they stated he had a record, she specifically spoke of something in 2005 that I wasn't aware of. I went home, about two weeks later, I went to Detroit, got a clearance, and my son does not have a record. And I specifically asked Emily, can I go ahead and get my Section 8 back again? She said, well, the decision has been made, um, okay, can I, what can I do? Well, you can write a letter, but it's not guaranteed that you'll get back on your Section 8. So I have been put in a situation, not only due to my disability, but the timeframe of looking for places, and, you know, like I explained to her, I can't make a person give me a place. I understand your grace period of 10 days, but if I send you something, say something done on the 6th, and you get it on the 3rd. Their policy also stated, in order to extend my time, something has to be done to the unit I'm in, it might have to be repaired in any kind of way. Well, that was done. She never checked on the unit, she denied me, but she informed the landlord first, who also informed me that the application was denied, and she felt to follow the policy on their own policy. So therefore, I was taken off of Section 8. So I've been trying since, now they put me on a two-year probation, when HUD came out, I explained that to them, and he looked at me like, two years probation, for what? I said, your guess is fit is mine, I don't know why. And if it's a policy of seven years, what do you see? So I just asked all that to be changed, and again, like everybody here that's dealing with Ferndale, it is Jennifer, Jennifer plays a big role in all this. They don't hear you, they don't return your calls, they're not asking for no type of explanation to maybe something that they have compared to what either one of us may have, it's just a no.
Thank you.
A no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming out tonight. Good evening, sir.
Hello, mayor, council, I was wondering if I could drop this off to you, kind of approach?
Of course, yeah, if you're going to, Marnie will grab him. Yep.
So I'm here to announce, on April 24th, from 4 to 8 o'clock at Western Market, we'll be celebrating Earth Day after-party. We know that you're all busy on Earth Day, probably attending a lot of different functions and different activities, so we'd like to invite everybody... So we'd like to invite everybody to either walk up, or ride your bikes, or just get up to Western Market, and we'll be having some samplings of some, a lot of local, all-natural and organic products, and, uh, we'll be showing some of our, our goods to, uh, the community, and we invite everybody to come up, it's a free event. Um, inside the store, we'll be having a free wine sampling of all organic wines, and we'd like people to try them out, to see, uh, some of the wines that we have, like to say they're all organic, and again, that's all free, and it's, um, a nice family-friendly uh, event. And, uh, I just wanted to invite everybody to come up and check out Western Market, to, we'll be starting our, our spring flower sale, uh, as of May 1st, and this is kind of the kickoff to that, uh, spring flower season, and, uh, we hope that, um, you can all attend, and we just wanted to invite the whole community out. So that was it, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Steve, appreciate it.
Yeah, my name's Claude Washington.
I'm sorry, say that again, sir?
Claude Washington.
Good evening.
From Autumn House, got a couple of things, uh, we fought to get the community rooms open on each one of the floors, and they finally opened them after a few years, and they turned around and cut the cords off the air conditioners. So, you know, what sense does that make? And also, all the new, all the new residents, they tell them, do not speak to the residents that's already there. Every new resident, they tell them that. And I mean, what sense do that make? They try and get you not to join together to fight what's going on. That's about it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you coming.
Hi, Council and Mayor. Um, I'm, my name is Cynthia, and I do live in the Autumn House Apartments, I moved in there in 2010. When I moved in there, it was, and my apartment infested with bedbugs, and I got ate up pretty bad, and I reported it, but I never did get any kind of assistance, but I hung in there because I really liked living there, it's a very nice apartment, but we do have to definitely get some kind of something going where we can help the other people, because there's other people that's dealing with it. And, um, but like I said, I'm for the people, I'm for Ferndale, because I like living in Ferndale. I've been here since 2010, and I don't want to leave. But, um, yeah, have to definitely be some changes made, because I felt like, why is this happening to me? I'm not getting any kind of, anything, no kind of help or nothing, and that's all I've asked for was like, just help me out here, can, because it was a horrible, horrific experience for me, but I don't want to see it happen to other people. It could be dealt with, but they got to answer that phone and talk to us, we got to communicate. So that's about it for me, but otherwise, it's a great city, I really love it.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for coming.
Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Mecca France, and I'm also a resident at Whittington, at, um, Autumn House. And to piggyback, uh, what Bob and others were saying, you know, I've been to the meetings, I've stood there, you see me on a stick, they won't open the door, um, I've been approved for Section 8 twice, I've been the resident of the city for the last five years, I've been approved twice, but I still have Section 8. Uh, there's nothing that would deny me from being on Section 8, there's, I fit all the criteria, um, but the, uh, the lack of respect for elderly people and disabled people by the board members and the employees of Ferndale Housing Commission as a whole, is just totally disrespectful to anyone, you know? Uh, like, we have no air conditioning, every time it rains, my, it rains inside of my window, you know, I, I'm, I'm confused on how the city of Ferndale keeps passing the inspection when I can push my whole window, the frame and all, if I push on it hard enough, it'll fall out, and I'm on the fourth floor. So you can come and just stand outside and look, and each window frame is rusted and it's deteriorating, you know, and, and, and I, I'm, I used to be a business owner until I got hurt. Mr. Payne Sons LLC, that's, I, you know, I own, so I know drywalling, I'm windowing, any kind of construction, I know firsthand, I have experienced, I have, oh, 20 years. So it's, you know, it's nothing, I'm just, I'm not making this up, um, I plead with you guys to do something about the board, I've been to board meetings, and half the members don't show up, and then at once, one meeting I went to, they, uh, one of the gentlemen told us that the other gentleman didn't even want to be on the board, so he doesn't come, but he's still a board member, so I asked them, well, how can we replace him, you know? We have one resident on the board, but she lives at Whittington, she has no clue, because she's in a wheelchair, she can't even come down here to know what's going on. So this whole building has no representation at all, and I would plead with the mayor and the city council to kind of get on and to make some changes here, because we deserve respect. You know, like I said, I'm a business owner, I just got hurt, fell in my head, hit my back, I can't work anymore, you know, so I'm living on a budget that I'm basically paying my kids allowance, now I'm living on, so, you know, and to have a, just total disrespect, you know, the carpet in this, in there is, you know, the building's been there, there's been no upgrades to the building since it's been built. So I would, you know, hope that we can kind of, because we can't get no resolution with those guys, you know? You ask Emily something, she, you know, or you ask Jennifer Monday something, she's very rude and obnoxious, you know, she had the audacity to tell me that, I should be grateful that I have that apartment. So when you're dealing with people like that, and, you know, it's, you know, I voted, I've been here four years, so I voted for all of you too, I don't, I'm not one car guy, you know, I vote, I got common sense, so whoever's got the best plan to me, that's why I'm voting for, whether you're Republican or Democrat, doesn't matter. But I just, you know, as a concerned resident of the city, because I'm a resident of the city of Ferndale, I would hope that Mayor and Council, because you guys, from what they told us, they, there's no way they can be replaced without you. So we are here as residents begging, basically, for you guys to replace the whole staff and the board as a whole.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, baby.
Thanks for coming out.
Hi, you met me already, one more thing too, he's, Mecca is correct, um, we have people that sat on that board for 19 years, they don't have a clue, you know, it's yeah or nay, it's like, when you're, when you become a judge in the Supreme Court, it's yeah or nay, you know, these, these people don't have a clue, then, I was talking to the guy, and I, he said that he didn't, he didn't know that Deborah Wilson never let us say anything, but where were you all these years? You know, so, I mean, it's ridiculous that we are going through a situation that nobody understands, and we want you guys to understand where we are going and how we are living, and it's, it's a very deplorable position that we are in. And I want you guys to take time out after this meeting, or whenever you have time, and if you could come to Autumn House where we can have a meeting, I know you guys are council people, but we need you guys. Um, the HUD came over, we spoke to HUD, and HUD said that they're, give you guys the money to fund the program. So we have to come to you guys, because you guys are in charge of the low income and Section 8. And HUD was there also, and they realized how the, how, um, Jennifer, Jennifer Monday, because she didn't know it was HUD that was there, so she had experience of how HUD came in there, and she was so rude to the people too. So it's all on record, and if you guys want to get that record, you'd be more than happy to get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Rick Seahawk, 156 Spencer. Last year I called, I live, uh, off the alley from Sam's Restaurant in White Castle, and there's a, there's a rat problem there, from those two restaurants. I called last year, and the city said you should build a rat wall. Well, my property is quite long at that point, it's like 100 feet, so, it's 100 feet of, of both sides of rat walls, lots of cement, and, you know, if you build a rat wall, you also got to put metal in the cement, uh, below the cement so that the rats won't tunnel under it. So, any suggestions for me, other than for me to spend, uh, a lot of time building two rat walls on both sides so that they won't, you know, dig under, go through my yard?
My suggestion, if you haven't already, is to contact our code enforcement area, which is chair, which is headed by Derek Delacorte, and maybe they can come up with some, uh, potential alternative solutions for you. Derek, have you been in contact with this gentleman?
I have not.
Okay, so that's Derek Delacorte, he's in charge of our code enforcement, and, uh, why don't you guys exchange numbers, and Derek will follow up with you and see what he can suggest?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Good evening.
Hi, I'm a resident of Ferndale at the Autumn House, and my complaint is about the rats, as he just mentioned about Spencer Street. But anyway, we have a rat problem at the Autumn House where they're running back and forth, we brought it to Emily Vicki attention like several times over the year. We was catching the rats at first, they told us that we could not catch the rats because of the neighbors walking the dogs, the dog might get into the rat trap, which the dog should be on the lease anyway, but in the same token, they said they would take care of the problem, where they haven't done anything. The rats are just running crazy around the building. You can't even get in your car, you scared to get out at night, we sitting on the patio, chilling, barbecuing, rats running around, you know, but we can't catch them, because we would get a violation. So they don't want us to do anything, but they're not doing anything about the situation. Once they start coming into the building, we in trouble, we dealing with roaches, bedbugs, eventually we're going to have rats in the building. I mean, we low income, that don't make us poor peoples or lower than the next person. I mean, we all had jobs in our life, we can't disable, or whatever, and we do, does, does respect, does need respect. So that's why we're coming here to voice our opinion, hopefully you guys could help us, as they say, we are begging for help. I've been there 11 years, nothing's getting done, we don't get no more flowers planted outside no more. They pulled up flowers from their building, brought them to our building, which is just garbage really. We used to have red, white, and blue flowers every year, it's no money, it's no funds. Every time we go to them about something, there's no money in the budget. I haven't had my apartment painted in 11 years, I have dropped top ceiling, which they all black. I asked that I paint, she told me, no, not at this time. If I mess up my apartment, charge me for it, but you telling me I cannot paint my apartment? You guys don't have the money to paint it, I'm using my own money, but I cannot paint my place, I've been there 11 years, and nothing's been done. So, like I said, we asking for help.
And we hear you, thank you. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Brian Presley, 305 West Troy, I wanted to come here two weeks ago, couldn't make it, but I guess you guys had a lot on the plate with the glow, which you all did a very good job with, so we appreciate that. Um, regarding 360, you know, you demonstrated why Ferndale is a good city, that's because it has good leaders who listen, and that is what all of you did, so we appreciate that. Um, moving forward also, I want to take this opportunity on behalf of myself to apologize to Mr. Siegel, I believe, between the times of March 2014 and June 2014, he just received some absolutely horrendous information from particular individuals within the Ferndale government, um, information that could have been different if just some simple 60-second conversations were held with the 30 most important residential stakeholders. Those are the individuals who will drive whatever it is occurs at these lots that we want to happen. Uh, moving forward, there's a minuscule minority that don't want to do anything, just like there's a minuscule minority that want to dr- uh, build the Ferndale Trump Towers. So no more discussion about, well, we're not going to, you know, we're going to do something, okay, we're going to do something. So now we have broadened the pool of stakeholders, we understand whose opinions are important, and we can move forward doing that, and I'm looking forward to it, I don't know, uh, when you guys are bringing this up, or who the next, you know, I follow your Twitter, and hopefully I try to find some things on there. Um, so keep us informed, because we're going to find a way to be informed ourselves, and we'll be a lot happier if we're, uh, we're contacted, because, uh, you know, I appreciate the, the meetings with business owners and all that, but a lot of them go home at night, and their home ain't Ferndale. So, uh, in response to the, the individuals who are here, I feel confident that all of you will do what you can to help them, because you've demonstrated that's what you do, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, we're over our 30 minutes, but that's okay, it was a wonderful conversation, and I appreciate, truly appreciate everyone who came out this evening, you did a great job, by the way, you weren't, you didn't look nervous if you were, so, uh, appreciate everyone who, who came out tonight. Uh, we're going to move on now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are those items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is removed from the consent agenda by council. Uh, let me read the consent agenda for you now. Uh, item A is the approval of a minute for the regular and special meetings held March 23rd, 2015. Item B is the approval of a special event permit for the 2015 Spring Food Truck Rally to be held on Saturday, May 2nd, 2015. Item C is the approval of a special event permit for the 2015 Pig and Whiskey to be held on July 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2015. Item D is the approval of a special event permit for the 2015 Sierra's Club Green Cruise to be held on Saturday, August the 8th. Item E is the approval of a special event permit for the 2015 Funky Ferndale Art Fair to be held on September 25th, 6th, and 7th of 2015. Item F is the approval of a special event permit for the 2015 DIY Street Fair, also to be held on September 25th, 26th, and 27th of this year. Item G is the approval of the AcuMed ESO Agreement for a first year cost of $8,921, of which $3,995 is a one-time Zoll and Phillips Monitor Collection Fee to be charged to the Fire Contract Services account. Item H is the approval of ordinance number 1159, amending the City of Ferndale Code of Ordinances, Chapter 20, Vegetation, Article 3, Noxious Vegetation, as submitted by our Chief Innovation Officer. Item I is the approval to rescind the resolution of March 23rd, 2015, objecting to the renewal and approval of the renewal of the Class C liquor license to Antoinette S. Greggo, doing business as Como's Restaurant 22812 Woodward Avenue. Item, item J is the approval to grant permission for use of the public sidewalk in front of Seasonal Corner 1011 Livernoy, for the purpose of exhibiting goods, wares, and merchandise for sale from Friday, March 8th to Sunday, March 10th, 2015, from 8:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., to the extent that said merchandise, good, and wares are displayed on sidewalks only, that the ability of pedestrians to navigate the sidewalk is preserved and contingent on Carlada, Cardeñas, Carneñez? Carneñez? Am I doing that, Cardenas, thank you, Carlada, executing the indemnification and license agreement on behalf of Seasonal Corner. Item K is the approval of a maintenance agreement for 25 traffic signals with the Road Commission for Oakland County at an estimated cost of $62,500, and that the DPW Director be authorized to execute the agreements, the expense to be charged to major streets, traffic signals, contractual, uh, and to approve the one-time expenditure of $41,000 to bring all 25 signals to a standard upkeep level to be charged to major streets, traffic signals, repair, and maintenance. Item L is the approval of the funding in the amount of $7,500 for diversity, cultural sensitivity training from the Human Resources Training Budget, and for this program to be delivered by Sheriff Jerry Clayton and the Cardinal Group Two, uh, that was submitted by our Director of HR. Item M is the approval of the recommendation of the Ferndale Parks and Rec Committee to relocate the play structure located at Woodward and Pearson to Oppenheimer Park, and that the relocation work be performed by Sinclair Recreation at a cost of $7,500 to be charged to the General Fund- to be charged to the General Fund Contractual Account. And finally, the approval of the bills and payroll, this is item N, as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to the review by the Council Finance Committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I would like to pull 7H.
H, all right. And we'll make that item G on the regular agenda. Anything else?
I'd move that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of item H.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Lennon. Is there discussion or comments on the consent agenda, either by council or by anyone in the audience?
Yes, I have a couple, Your Honor.
Yes, please.
7G, the AcuMed ESO agreement for the EMS billing. I wanted to know, is there alignment with that system with our new billing system that we've just purchased last year for the rest of the city? Do we know if that? I guess what I'm asking is...
Is there connection?
Is there some kind, is there some, is there some way that we can use the existing billing system that we just purchased instead of this? Does it have, does our new billing system have the ability? I just want to make sure that we're not spending money necessarily for a new software system, while we just spent a lot of money for a new financial system.
Medical billing is kind of specific, and EMS has got its own caveat within that specific of medical billing. So it's really difficult to find connectable software that meets the both of them. This is a very intuitive program, and it's been in use. Usually, we jump to the forefront of this kind of technology in the Fire Department. We waited, and everybody's got great experience with it, much more functionality than the actual AcuMed billing software. So AcuMed Biller stays our Biller, but this software is to collect patient care data, protected under HIPAA. It's very secure, slightly different because it's grabbing the stuff from the field and converting it to go into medical billing at AcuMed.
Okay.
If I may just a clarification question, and it doesn't change my support of this, but we should, if we can find out what the plan is, on October 1, there's a fairly dramatic change in medical billing with ICD-10.
Yes.
And if we buy this today, which I'm presuming is processing under IDC-9, what is that, or ICD-9, what does that look like? Do we have to pay for another upgrade to get ICD-10? Or does that, you know, how does that, does that automatically part of the warranty package with the software? So as long as we can explore that.
Well, AcuMed's our Billers, and they're the ones that stay up with that. And they said that this would flow into the new system, providing we know what's coming with the new system. There are some questions that aren't answered.
Couple.
And without knowing that, they can't guarantee anything. But they typically update regularly, and it doesn't pass on to us unless it was something really severe.
All right. So every time a code set changes, they automatically pass?
They automate, yeah.
Perfect. That's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Other comments or questions?
Yes, not on that one.
Oh, but on other consent agenda items?
Yes. So my next one is 7K, the RCOC Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreements. I guess my question is to DPW, as part of our request for the bond, how much of the bond is related to replacement of traffic signal equipment? And does this impact that, the bond, in any way?
The average cost for the upgrade of the traffic signals, the 25 that we're talking about, is approximately $150,000 apiece. What this does is buy us considerable time, because as council's aware, most of our traffic signals are very antiquated. And in many cases, parts are very difficult to get a hold of and expensive. One of the things about this agreement that's very unique is that Oakland County, because they serve all communities other than us and one other, has an abundance of spare parts that they will give to us at no charge. We will pay for the maintenance. And basically, what will happen is, we're not gonna come in and be able to do all 25 traffic signals at 150,000 apiece, plus the time it would normally take anyway to do that type of volume. And so this will buy us time in order to do it on a phased approach. And if the bonds are indeed approved, we can certainly work that in. And if anything, once the, all the traffic signals are upgraded, this is the most economical way for the city to go in the future.
Let me ask a follow-up. What is the average lifespan of a traffic signal? And do we have a sense across the inventory we have today? Does this bring us all up to level? Or how many more are out there that are on the cusp of failure?
This is all of them. The other traffic signals that are not included in this are either already being serviced by the Road Commission, or we have upgraded as part of our normal traffic signal upgrade program.
Yes, thank you.
All right. If there's no further comments, Marty, would you call the roll, please? Oh, yeah. Please, come on up.
I wasn't asking to, on item J, on Carlotta Cardenas and Seasonal Corner, on item J, I didn't ask for a sidewalk permit, or the sidewalk is for the grassy area.
Right.
Is that?
You didn't ask for the sidewalk.
Right.
Right, right. And that is excluded, right? That the pedestrians won't be able to navigate?
Right, so I can use the grassy area.
Uh-huh.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes.
Okay, I have another question.
Sure.
The traffic light at Livernoy's and Marshall was knocked down for quite some time. And there's two giant holes that they didn't fill in with dirt. And there's like a pipe sticking out of the area that they need to come and cut out of there, or whatever. But there's sink, there's like sink holes now. They're really getting deep, because there's not any dirt in it. I called the DPW, and they never got back with me. She wasn't sure if it was something to do with the DT Energy, or it was a city issue. So I don't know who to ask.
Well, the director is sitting right next to you, and he could either address it or follow up with you, and...
I'll tell you what, it'll be on my list first thing in the morning. This is the first that's been brought to my attention. It may be something from the ET. They did work in the area also. I'll be happy to look into it.
Yeah, and there's a pipe sticking out that they have to like put down to the ground. Okay, thanks so much.
We'll take a look at that tomorrow. Thanks. All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Holter?
Yes, thanks. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is a consideration to appoint Laura McCulsky, Suzanne Janik, and Robert Primo to the Ferndale Beautification Commission for terms ending December 31, 2017. West Council's pleasure on that.
I would move to confirm the appointment of Laura McCulsky, Suzanne Janik, and Robert Primo to the Ferndale Beautification Commission for terms ending December 31, 2017.
Support.
Moved by Martin and just barely supported by Piana. Any discussion?
Are any of them here? No.
I don't think. I didn't see any of those three are here.
Robert was here earlier, but I think he has already departed.
Yep, okay. Just want to thank them for their willingness to serve. This commission is growing and doing new things, and a lot of new energy in the Beautification Commission, and we appreciate your effort. So thank you. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon? And Mayor Holter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to regular agenda, item B is the consideration to appoint Aaron Bromen to the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission for a term ending December 31, 2017.
I move to confirm the appointment of Aaron Bromen to the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission for a term ending December 31, 2017. Support.
Moved by Pollocka and supported by Martin. Any discussion on this item?
Thanking for her volunteering, and we're excited to have some new people join the FESC.
Marty, would you call the roll?
Very well qualified.
And very well qualified.
Yes.
And members Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon? Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Holter?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda, item C is a consideration of an application from Bee Nectar LLC for a new small winemaker and microbrewer license at 1511 Jarvis. And who's gonna introduce that item?
I can do that.
All right.
From my understanding, Bee Nectar is looking to open a new facility. They intend to continue their operations at their current locations, but they have a new location coming in at 1511 Jarvis. And Michigan law requires that they obtain parallel permits for each new physical location where they have production facilities. So they are requesting a small winemaker and a microbrewer license to create their products at this new location. And a public hearing is not required for liquor licenses with the small winemakers and microbrewer licenses. So we just need to give them a resolution of local government approval. The police department doesn't need to review it, but they have, and they have no objections.
Mr. Mayor, I think he's here if he wants to speak on this. You wanna come forward?
Oh, yeah. There he is. I saw him earlier. Yeah. Good evening.
What is it, every six months now?
Right? We're getting the old habit here.
Hey, Brad, you haven't met me. Live here in Ferndale. We never even considered any other places but Ferndale for the new facility. It's actually in the same building as our original space, so we didn't really think there'd be any issues. We're just too sweet, it's over. But yeah, we got 20,000 square feet, formerly the Paper Street Facility there at the corner of Juana and Jarvis. It's been a great learning experience, kind of going through such a big, big project. So didn't know if you have any questions for me, but just want to thank you all.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions for Brad?
Just a comment. You have a great product, and I really appreciate your commitment to Ferndale. I think we all do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to recommend to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission approval of requests from Bee Nectar LLC for a new winemaker and microbrewer license. To be located at, I'm not done. To be located at... I know it's getting late. License be located at 1511 Jarvis, Ferndale.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Any further discussion or questions on this item?
No, I'm so glad just to support your business growth and expansion. Pretty awesome.
Thank you.
Marty, you wanna call the roll, please?
Okay. Councilmembers, Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to regular agenda, item D is the consideration to sell East Saratoga property. And Derek, I think you're back up.
I am. I'm glad to be back up again. As City Council's aware, this is a piece of property we discussed previously. It is city-owned. It's a narrow, probably about a 50-foot by close to 1,000-foot piece of property located on the north side of Saratoga between Pharaoh and Bonner. It's zoned industrial, as discussed previously. The parcel, as a standalone piece, is too narrow to support any type of individual industrial development. So when we started to look at it, we decided and came to council and recommended that the best thing to do would probably sell it to an adjacent user or business with a like zoning. We approached all of the businesses surrounding there and asked them if they would be interested in it. We did have one, and it makes perfect sense. It's immediately adjacent to their world headquarters, and that's Garden Fresh Salsa or Garden Fresh Gourmet. We discussed the price of the property at the last meeting. We did get a broker's valuation from two brokerage firms. Both of them had it between $20,000 and $30,000 as a standalone piece of property, again because it's not developable. So we came up with a sale price of $25,000, which they did accept. We also discussed with them and at the previous meeting, although the parcel is underutilized, it does have a barbecue grill and a basketball court that was a source of some community pride and related to a resident from years ago. They did agree to kick in, and we got the estimates from Lloyd, who's agreed to move that court and the associated improvements with it over to a park, the nearest possible park that would accept it. That would cost about $7,000. They agreed to pay for that as well in the sale price, which puts it at about $32,000 or exactly $32,000. Again, that was accepted. There's a motion in your park, or your packet to approve the purchase agreement and allow us to move forward and execute the sale of the property. And we are, of course, here to answer any questions you may have.
What park will it go to?
I don't know yet. I think we were looking at Vester Park north of Nine Mile, but I don't know if that's been finalized yet.
Yes, that would be the park. That would be the closest. And I spoke to the gentleman that was before council today, and, you know, I'm going to meet with him later on in the year, once the weather cooperates and the frost laws are off. Part of the court, the basketball relocation, will require a court to be poured with concrete. So it's gonna be a couple of weeks yet before we do that work, but we spoke to the gentleman. He is very appreciative of council, and we'll be working with him as soon as the weather cooperates.
I should point out as well that the piece of property, although it's not a park in the city's park system, was formerly used as kind of passive recreation for the area. And as council indicated, the money from the sales of the property is targeted towards the Park and Recreation Operational Budget, and you see that in the motion as well.
Great.
I'd like to move that City Council approve the sale of parcel number 2535104016 to Garden Fresh Gourmet for the amount of $42,000, and authorize the mayor and clerk's office to execute the purchase agreement. Revenue from the sale of the property shall be directed to the Parks Department 101-750-675-000.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka, yes.
I am going to recuse myself from this vote.
Oh. On the grounds of?
Of him being my employer.
That's true. That is true. All right, fair enough. Any discussion, comments, questions on this item? All right. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Holter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to what was formerly on our special agenda as item C is now item E, the fiscal year '16 and '17 general fund budget summary. April, are you gonna?
I can't. Do you need a break real quick, or do you want to just keep going?
I was gonna sneak and take a break, but if we want a formal one, we could break for three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
They're minutes.
All right. We'll break for three minutes.
Do you get a little marker, Javies? It's in the middle of both of them.
Otherwise...
No, I got it.
You're gonna have it.
Right here. He's the customer, whether it's us, the customer. You want it on every one of them? You got it. So here we go. That one's done.
Yeah, that's fine.
Your head's home after here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll probably take a look at it, because I just watch them in an dangerous situation. There's very rarely a real clear, yeah, if you have one or mine, and the other dropped, but none of the breakers dropped.
Thank you.
So, what you have before you is somewhat of a summary, um, that by charter were required to present you the budget, which you have in your packet, uh, on, uh, at this meeting. And then there is going to be a public hearing on April twenty-eighth on Monday for the adoption, formal adoption of this, said budget. So, I'm gonna go through and touch on some highlights. Anytime council has any questions, please feel free to step in and ask at that time. So, the agenda timeline, as we talked about, is today is the budget review and the summary. Um, in here, we'll go over the budget as it's written, but as you know, uh, we do two-year budgeting at this, at this time. And two thousand seventeen is, um, potential for a question mark, because as we know, we have a current, uh, request on a ballot for renewal of our headley override. So, we do have a very short version of what, uh, option B for the budget for seventeen may look like if the voter-approved renewal for the headley does not go, go through. And we'll need to revisit that in more greater detail, which I'll talk about in just a second in May, should that proposal not pass. And then on April twenty-seventh, I apologize, not the twenty-eighth, uh, we will have the formal adoption of fiscal year two thousand sixteen, um, and the, um, potential for two thousand and seventeen. So, with that, um, what we're looking at is to obviously maintain our general operating at fourteen point five four and then continue on with the voter-approved headley we are requesting, um, in two thousand and sixteen to remain at the five point four five, and then, uh, two thousand seventeen is to be determined. Um, we have the publicity, uh, millage that remains on, that, um, is four point one zero one, or point one zero zero five zero for both sixteen and seventeen. Solid waste remains consistent at two point one eight. Uh, the GOT debt service, which is for our current street millage that we have, um, is actually going to go down to six point four five and will go down again in, uh, two thousand seventeen to five point four, assuming that the renewal for the street and parks millage passes. Um, so for a total millage, uh, actually going down in two thousand seventeen by a little over one mil. Dan, you have a question?
No.
No, sorry, you're just looking, okay. So, that's just a summary. And we'll talk about this in detail as we move forward. So, as, uh, in talking, um, about where our taxable value is, it's important to note that our property, our tax revenue still remains at twenty-three percent below two thousand and seven levels. You can see that the green shows the property tax revenue, um, as it stands, and the blue portion you see starting in two thousand and eleven shows the headley override. So, you can see that even with the headley, we're still, uh, still below or at where we were in, uh, two thousand and seven, so very close to that. So, you can see there, we've had multiple conversations that while we did get the headley renewal, that our taxable value drops, declines so drastically that we still, with the headley, we're not able to recover and recoup all of our costs. In fact, our budget remains about a million dollars less in revenue and expenditures than it was in two thousand and ten with the headley. So, as we go forward, again, it will be important to, to know, uh, throughout this budget conversation, how important it is that the renewal for the headley continue on beyond this current fiscal year of two thousand, or the next fiscal year of two thousand and sixteen. Um, again, same thing with the state shared revenue, uh, continues, uh, had a steady decline, and while it is upticking, it's upticking in a very small, uh, small amounts and is twelve percent lower than two, than it was in two thousand and seven. Um, what we've showed and focused on in two thousand sixteen and seventeen is a assumed one point nine percent increase, which has been, um, a general average throughout the last few years. It's also important to note that, and we'll talk about that again as well, that there's still a few things to be, um, worked through at the state level. As you know, that the voters approved personal property tax adjustment as it relates to, um, all of the, uh, personal property, which again, to remind council and the general public, personal property is those, um, the taxes on business for their personal property. Uh, they've indicated that they plan on, um, replacing that, but as we know, the state doesn't, it's not necessarily apples to apples, and so there is potential to still lose some personal property tax base as well, even though they've indicated that they plan on replacing that. So, state shared revenue-wise, um, we rely on that from the state and as well as the personal property tax that may go away or not be fully funded. Um, as it relates to, just kind of put it a little bit, I've talked a little bit about this, but to summarize again, that when we approved that headley in two thousand and eleven, it allowed us time to restructure and invest to avoid those drastic, drastic reductions. At this point, a headley, for us, the headley override is worth two point six million dollars. So, without that, over the last course of the last few years, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to try to save costs, readdress how we do business, use technology, all of those things that we've been trying to do to avoid massive reductions in staff, of which, again, unfortunately, as we move forward, I'll show you, uh, proposal for budget B, which would show some drastic reductions. We are looking, though, at, um, I think another thing that has been talked about quite extensively is the fact that we're watching all of our property tax, um, property ta, our properties increase in value, but that doesn't necessarily equate to money that comes into the city. So, we are looking at an increase of about five hundred thousand dol, five hundred thousand or five hundred million, which is, five hundred thousand, there's an extra increase to, oh, an increase approximately seven million, so a five hundred million dollar increase, which increases its, our taxable value of seven million. However, when you, when you put that to paper, that actually only means a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to the general fund. So, you can see where that, it, it sounds like everything is, is going very well, and it is, and we're excited that our property values are increasing, but it's not equating to larger revenues for the city. And that also just assumes, uh, we've been, for the sake of argument, trending over time about a one point eight, one point eight percent increase in CPI. So, that's been that average trend. So, I'm going over this fast considering it's nine, after nine o'clock. So, just a friendly reminder, as always, um, pretty consistently how our general fund is expended or is spent is very, is similar to most communities. You will look at most communities and they will have a very similar pie chart, uh, with, uh, with the, um, sixty-five percent of all of our general fund is typically goes to, uh, personnel. Again, if you looked at most communities, you'll see it'll vary up and down percent-wise, but, uh, the average is, you will, pie chart would look very similar. So, we're not different from other communities. Here's a little bit more of a breakdown. Um, about seven million dollars of our, our budget's a little over eighteen million dollars. Seven million dollars just goes to current employees for their full and part-time costs. We have about six hundred and twenty-one thousand that goes just into overtime. Now, again, we have large amounts of overtime, particularly in police and fire because of the, of the way that we operate with them. Uh, you have to have coverage, um, you have to be able to have minimum staffing, meet minimum staffing requirements, injury issues, um, just general, um, opportunity to make sure that those are backfilled. So, overtime is, tends to be higher, which, again, if you look at a lot of other communities, they have high overtime in police and fire, too. It's kind of part of the whole business operation. Benefits is a significant portion of what's part of that sixty-five percent, which includes your active and retiree healthcare, your, um, your post-employment benefits, which is retire, or health, retiree healthcare, and your pension obligations. I will, I would like to note, though, that Ferndale was actually one of the forerunners in those that eliminated retiree healthcare for new employees. Um, we did, um, remove defined benefit as well and is a defined contribution community for the most part. You guys were actually one of the trend centers, one of the very first communities ever did that. So, as we keep moving forward, you're gonna start to reap the benefits of that. It's just going to take a long time to recover. However, a lot of communities still have what we refer to as legacy costs, and I'm glad, and I'm proud to be able to say that Ferndale is reducing those legacy costs little by little and, and offering other benefits in lieu of to, to remove those legacy costs. But you still, again, when you're a service industry, when your majority of your, what you do, and all of what you do is dependent on people, it does make sense that your budget is, the majority of your budget is actually personnel costs. One of the things, though, that we have done, um, and we're very proud of throughout, again, if it wouldn't have been for that headley, uh, override approval in two thousand and eleven, we would not have had the opportunity to really work through in a, in a, um, a clear and more, um, research-based idea of how to restructure and to save money. We're starting to see the fruits of that labor over the last couple of years by investing in technology. Um, DPW is a perfect example of really taking and, um, really taking a look at what they can do, how they can do it better, how they can create efficiencies, and have saved well over six hundred thousand, I think. Talking to Lloyd, um, even thinks that he's gonna surpass that six hundred thousand dollar mark by just, uh, we hire differently, we hire talent differently, we expect different things from our employees, and we actually, um, use our employees for ideas and things of that nature to get those things done. That's just one example, and I could, I will go, I could go through that with every department on how they're creating efficiencies. Another significant savings has been made in, um, with council allowing us to explore and be creative is really focusing on wellness opportunities, um, between, starting with Weight Watchers and looking at our, um, healthcare clinic and just, just general healthy, um, healthy employee workforce, we're looking at a six hundred thousand dollar reduction in healthcare costs, which is almost unheard of. Uh, one of the things that the city does as well, whether it relates to healthcare, is that we are what's called self-funded, so we actually pay for what we use rather than having what's called a, um, fully insured, where you have premiums that you use, that you have to pay whether you use it or not. We choose to, um, take the chance and be self-insured, and it's paying off the dividends for us. Um, it's, one of the things with healthcare for every minute, for every second, for every dollar that you save, next year can be different and it could be more, but I think right now we're finding a trend of reduction in healthcare costs, and we hope that that moves forward, especially with our new health, uh, health and wellness clinic. Um, the other thing over the last five years that we've been working very hard to do is really worked with our unions to, um, move forward in a manner that allows for, for, um, working together to try to reduce costs through, um, minimal raises, uh, significant union concessions and things of that nature. We've also worked very hard to build and, um, really cultivate a relationship with all of them, which has allowed us to meet and be very creative on how we can still keep morale up and, and still provide quality service a, and, and try to find creative ways of, of benefiting the, our employees, and we'll continue to do that in the future. So, we, we have worked really hard to create and, and cost savings through, for many uses. These are just a couple of the highlights, but really the use of technology, working with our employees and just being creative and actually council letting us be creative has been incredibly helpful, and we're starting to see the fruits of that labor. Last year, as you know, um, there were significant changes we made to our budget. Uh, Mel, uh, council member Piana had mentioned this morning, or, or earlier, at our earlier meeting about priority-based budgeting, and we've worked very hard to try to create a budget that is easier to understand. Um, the general public, we're hoping now can take a look at some line items and understand what things look like and what, and what they mean, rather than being, you know, put into big pools of cash and things of that nature. We'll continue to do that, but the, we spent a lot of time last year really restructuring our budget. So, this year, the budget's somewhat boring, because we made all of those changes, and we do do multi-year budgeting, so you'll start to see, you'll start to see that as we move, as we continue to move forward. Some key changes that happened in this particular budget, again, keep, we're always going to be readjusting and, and really being as transparent as possible. As we have pulled out communications into a separate, um, into a separate, uh, department before, we've kind of taken it from different pieces from different departments. The cable department, we're really trying to focus on the, um, on capturing the creativity that could be done within the cable department, and we've needed to create a separate, um, department for that as well. And again, we were kind of shoving things in, in the cable department, and now we can actually take a look at what does it really truly cost to run the cable department. Same with motor pool, right? Uh, we've moved that away from being a one-pooled department to each department. You'll now notice will be assigned the cost to their, to their cars and their vehicles, which again allows more conversation on, um, when you see that potentially, I believe next year, there might be a fire truck that's being purchased. It allows that opportunity for us to have that conversation and to not get lost in a pool, in, in a motor pool cash account. That way, we can all ask the right questions on this, you know, how can we finance this, things of that nature. So, that will go a long way as well in really showing and be more transparent about what's being bought, what vehicles and things of that nature. The big one, uh, that we're really excited about is the, there's been such an emphasis over the last two years on, on our parks department, and how much does it really cost to, to facilitate the parks that we have? And we pulled that out this year. This will be a work in progress, just with other departments, when you, when you've had everything kind of mashed into different departments and different categories, will take some time to wade through, but I think it's very important, um, that we be able to pull out how much it actually costs to maintain our parks and our structures that stand there, so that we can put the appropriate money into the parks that we can, but also to understand that is one hundred percent covered by the general fund and, and what that does cost, so that as we go on to priority-based budgeting, should the headley override renewal not be, um, approved, that we can have greater conversations with greater knowledge on what exactly things do cost, so that we can, basically, it's what is called priority-based budgeting, make priorities within the general fund as we move forward. So, um, those are the most notable changes. As relates to all of the other departments, they were all very consistent. As you know, on Saturday, there was an opportunity to ask questions, um, and, uh, really, we found that most... dollar that you save, next year can be different, and it could be more, but I think right now we're finding a trend of reduction in healthcare costs, and we hope that that moves forward, especially with our new health, uh, health and wellness clinic. Um, the other thing over the last five years that we've been working very hard to do is really worked with our unions to, um, move forward in a manner that allows for, for, um, working together to try to reduce costs through, um, minimal raises, uh, significant union concessions and things of that nature. We've also worked very hard to build and, um, really cultivate a relationship with all of them, which has allowed us to meet and be very creative on how we can still keep morale up and, and still provide quality service a- and, and try to find creative ways of, of benefiting the, our employees, and we'll continue to do that in the future. So we, we have worked really hard to create and, and cost savings through, for many uses. These are just a couple of the highlights, but really the use of technology, working with our employees, and just being creative and actually council letting us be creative has been incredibly helpful, and we're starting to see the fruits of that labor. Last year, as you know, um, there were significant changes we made to our budget. Uh, Mel, uh, council member Piana had mentioned this morning, or earlier, at our earlier meeting about priority-based budgeting, and we've worked very hard to try to create a budget that is easier to understand. Um, the general public, we're hoping now can take a look at some line items and understand what things look like and what, and what they mean, rather than being, you know, put into big pools of cash and things of that nature, and we'll continue to do that. But the, we spent a lot of time last year really restructuring our budget. So this year, the budget's somewhat boring, because we made all of those changes, and we do do multi-year budgeting, so you'll start to see, you'll start to see that as we move, as we continue to move forward. Some key changes that happened in this particular budget, again, keep, we're always going to be readjusting and, and really being as transparent as possible. As we have pulled out communications into a separate, um, into a separate, uh, department before, we've kind of taken it from different pieces from different departments. The cable department, we're really trying to focus on the, on capturing the creativity that could be done within the cable department, and we've needed to create a separate, um, department for that as well. And again, we were kind of shoving things in, in the cable department, and now we can actually take a look at what does it really truly cost to run the cable department. Same with motor pool, right, uh, we've moved that away from being a one-pooled department to each department. You'll now notice will be assigned the cost to their, to their cars and their vehicles, which again allows more conversation on, um, when you see that potentially, I believe next year there might be a fire truck that's being purchased. It allows that opportunity for us to have that conversation and to not get lost in a pool, in, in a motor pool cash account. That way, we can all ask the right questions on as, you know, how can we finance this, things of that nature. So that will go a long way as well, and really showing and be more transparent about what's being bought, what vehicles and things of that nature. The big one, uh, that we're really excited about is the, there's been such an emphasis over the last two years on, on our parks department, and how much does it really cost to, to facilitate the parks that we have? And we pulled that out this year. This will be a work in progress, just with other departments, when you, when you've had everything kind of mashed into different departments and different categories, will take some time to wade through, but I think it's very important, um, that we be able to pull out how much it actually costs maintaining our parks and our structures that stand there so that we can put the appropriate money into the parks that we can, but also to understand that is one hundred percent covered by the general fund and, and what that does cost so that as we go on to priority-based budgeting, should we have the override renewal not be, um, approved, that we can have greater conversations with greater knowledge on what exactly things do cost so that we can, basically, it's what is called priority-based budgeting, make priorities within the general fund as we move forward. So, um, those are the most notable changes. As it relates to all of the other departments, they were all very consistent. As you know, on Saturday, there was an opportunity to ask questions, um, and, uh, really, we found that most, uh, the departments have remained stable as it relates to their, to their costs in, in personnel and programming. Here we have, um, a, kind of a snapshot of two thousand and ten to two thousand and sixteen, and you'll see over the course of six years now that, um, revenues in two thousand and ten were at about eighteen million, and almost six years later, or six years later, they're at about a million dollars, so, uh, a million dollars more. So that, when you look at the cost of rising healthcare and general cost of inflation, that, um, that's about all of the increases that they were. Um, uh, same with expenses, they remain in line. Uh, in fact, our expenses for two thousand and fifteen are almost exactly as they were in two thousand and ten, and they slightly increased by about a hundred and thirty thousand in two thousand and sixteen. So you can see that we have continued to be as creative and conservative with, um, our community, with our residents', uh, trust in our, in our taxable dollars as much as possible. Um, a few notes there that I wanna talk about real quick, is you'll notice that uptick in two thousand and, uh, two thousand and fourteen, uh, we actually had to dip into our fund balance to pay for some roads. We are, our, our street fund is completely depleted at this point. Um, we no longer have any bond, uh, any bond money left from the millage that is currently on, the, it's been, that life has been exceeded. This will be our last payment we'll have in this next fiscal year. So we, which, so showing you in two thousand and fourteen, we actually had to dip into fund balance, and moving forward in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, we may have to do that as well, should, um, failure of the street and parks millage not pass, and as well as, um, the headly. Um, again, just a reminder that the current headly override is approved in two thousand and eleven, does expire at the end of this year. Um, the headly actually represents about fifteen percent of our general fund budget, which if, which is about two point six five, two point six five million dollars to the general fund. And I think I discussed this, um, at one of our town halls, and on, on that Saturday, that if any of us experienced a fifteen percent budget, uh, decrease in our own personal budget would be significant. It's, it's not as simple as not going out to eat once a week. This could be a hard payment for some people, and that's where the city of Ferndale will be as well, if that fails. Uh, two point six million, two point six five million dollars is going to be significant and drastic to our budget, and I'm gonna talk about that next. So what we did, because we can't go through and do an entire eighteen million dollar budget twice, um, we took what we call a two point six five million dollars in a glance, and what we did is, we took each department and what percentage they are of that current budget, of our current budget, and applied that across the board to two point six five million. Now granted, we would not do that. We would not be so laissez-faire to just do that across the board, but it's a representation. Um, what we would have to do is, if it fails on, in May, is bring back to council probably in June or July another budget for two thousand and seventeen that looks more, um, that's more realistic of, of what that would look like, but it's kind of a, it's a snapshot of what it would look like, um, if that, if that renewal doesn't take place. Um, city administration is, um, city hall, which is about twenty percent of the budget, and we will lose about six full-time employees, which would be sixty percent of our, our force will be reduced at city hall. Court would see an eighteen percent reduction. Police and fire would see the most significant reductions, um, as it relates to, um, boots on the ground. Police would effectively, if you were, again, do it across the board, approximately ten full-time employees, which would be a twenty percent reduction in their force, and seven full-time employees in fire, which would be about twenty-nine percent. Um, again, CED, see about a fourteen percent decrease, DPW, six percent, and recreation at twenty-five. Now, again, that, I cannot reiterate enough, that is just a, a general overview, but with police and fire being fifty-five, I think they're around fifty-five percent of our employee costs, there's no way that police and fire could, would not be impacted, and somehow, every department would have to be impacted by that two point six five million. So, um, again, it didn't make any sense to use staff time to go through and have, present a whole entire budget. However, I do know that over the course of last few months, that the departments have turned in some of their suggestions that we would take into consideration if, of the, if the headly renewal doesn't take place in two thousand and, or in this, in, um, May. So you might see, when we come back with that, if that doesn't happen, that those percentages might be a little different, um, but they are going to be very close, because personnel of our, are, is our most significant cost. So we've already, it's important to note that staff has already cut as much fat as possible so we could have avoided laying off, um, people during these last five years. And so there's not much left other than staff at this point throughout all departments. Uh, major roads, uh, this is a part of the, uh, non-general funds, looking at, we have the East Nine Mile resurfacing project will be completed. Hilton Road, um, which is part, uh, between Woodward Heights and Ten Mile, and Hilton Road, again, also between Eight and Nine Mile. However, if the Streets Millage does not pass, you can see there's pine crust resurfacing and planned for, uh, two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, that more than likely would have to revisit that and may need to be pushed off, um, because we're gonna have to realign how we do all of our roads, should the Streets Millage, or the Streets, should the Streets Millage not pass. And there would be some question too about Hilton Road from Eight to Nine Mile as well. We would have to take a look at, what does that look like and how is this going to work? Because all of the major, um, roads, it, it's funding is gonna be more difficult at that point. Same with local roads, it's even more significant. Um, it's important to know that Act fifty-one revenues only cover general maintenance of our local roads. They only cover snow removal, pavement marking, and traffic sign maintenance. That Street Millage allows us to continue to, um, maintain our streets, to resurface, to, um, work through our EDE ramps, all of those things. If the mi- if the millage for local streets does not pass, then what will happen is that we have to take that out, we would have to pay for that through the general fund, and which is about, I think, wait, about two point five to three million dollars a year to keep that up, that would have to come out of the general fund. And so it would, we wouldn't be able to do that. So not only would it cost, the cost be prohibitive, we would have to even take a lot longer to do our local roads, because we'd have to wait to get that money through other means or through the general fund. So it really puts us in a compromising situation that, uh, we, we actually only get very minimal revenue from the state as it relates to local roads, and it has actually nothing to do with the general maintenance of those roads. Uh, sanitation, we're excited to report that, again, through efficiencies through DPW, he's been, uh, Lloyd and his team have been able to keep costs down as much as possible, and we're able to maintain for fif- this fiscal year sixteen and seventeen the same current, uh, user fee as we have since two thousand and fifteen.
Nice question.
Yeah, please do.
Um, I'm curious how we rank with other communities in, uh, sanitation fees.
Okay. I, you know, I actually, we haven't done that study, but I'm sure we could get that pretty easy.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, as you know, the library used to be part of our budget, but with their new, um, being now part of a district library, they're no longer required to present, um, to city councils, so they're no longer on the docket for budget hearings, any, for, for the city of Ferndale. So with that, um, that is a summary. Uh, we also have to talk about water rates before we leave, but in general, um, what we'll do, when this is done, is after conversation with council tonight, there will be copies that will be posted at, uh, city hall, the, in the front desk, as well as at the library, and will be on our website for our residents to review, and also available to answer any questions that they might have. So with that, I'm gonna open it up for discussion with city council on how we wanna proceed with some of the things that we've talked about.
All right. Uh, your questions or comments on the budget, direction for staff, they have two weeks to prepare for the budget that we need to adapt at the next meeting.
I think the work has been very thorough and insightful, um, and, uh, accurate, so I really appreciate the hard work that has gone into coming up with the different scenarios to respond to our policies, goals, and needs as a community. Um, so I'm saddened by what choices we may have to make, um, given the headly not being renewed, so, um, I'm hoping that we don't have to make those tough choices.
Ditto.
Double ditto.
Um, yes, but speaking about the headly, could you, you identified a number of places where we've had some pretty significant cost savings, um, over the last couple of years, and I really applaud staff for diligently, um, looking at all the areas, um, that we could, as, the healthcare costs come to mind, but we also had, uh, kind of a one-time, uh, savings this year with our insurance, um, premium, other, other DPW savings. It, it wasn't clear to me, talk a little bit about how that, um, affects the overall, um, millage rate that we need, and why, um, it's still presented that we would need the full headly for this year with those savings. Where do those savings go? Where do the, where do the savings get, appear?
So one of the things that we work through is we, we also prioritize, and priority is core services. And when we, once we meet our core services need, which is our police and fire, recreation, things of that nature, what we take a look at is what do we have left over, and can that go into capital or roads? Can that go into, um, um, what we, backing up that, the OPEB, the, oh, other post-employee benefits has been a significant portion of the budget, it's been upwards of four million dollars in the past. Part of that is the claims that we currently pay for retirees, and the other part is the, what we contribute to the trust, which is not necessarily required. Unlike a pension, when you're underfunded in pension, you have to, um, you have to pay, uh, what the, the underfunding part, portion is, and with OPEB, you have a little more latitude. So we, over the course of the last couple of years, have worked through that, and in fact, last year, we worked with council to create a policy on, and not going below twenty-five percent of funding OPEB, but targeting fifty percent, and, and then making other judgment calls that way. So as we worked through that process, we started to look at these next couple of years in sixteen and seventeen, and where we are starting to see the savings come to fruition. And what we have done is we've actually were able to start putting money back into public improvement. Typically, what, we're using it for roads right now, because we didn't, we are out of road, of, of money to manage our streets. And so what we, what we're looking at this year, or, I'm sorry, in sixteen, is about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we could put into public improvement, or, um, and in, proposed in fiscal year seventeen, eight hundred and forty-four thousand. However, it is to be noted that if the, the Street Millage does pass, then that is money that can actually go back into the general fund, and you could essentially reduce that millage in both years, um, because of the cost savings that we have, have managed throughout the last couple of years are, are there for your taking at that point. So that's why we, we placed it in there as, as fore there was. However, that changes now with the potential for the Street Millage to be approved and parks to be improved, um, because that, that means that we are, capital needs are a lot less, are less, and it don't have to come out of the general fund. So it's important to note that we've had to supply any improvements to the parks and any improvements to the streets that, and the streets that wasn't covered by revenue had to come out of the general fund, and that won't have to happen anymore. So we have options as it relates to that.
So if I understand you correctly, if the, the road and parks improvement bond passes, that would create a, about a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar surplus for this there, surplus, uh, amount that we wouldn't have to put into roads.
Correct, you could put it in other places.
And eight hundred and forty-four in, in two seventeen?
Yes.
So that could, I'm sorry, through the chair.
Yeah.
So that could equate to, as you mentioned, ru- ruling back how much millage we have to ask for, but it could also mean that we could put that money into the water bucket, for example, and look at mitigation of water rates in the future.
You can, that, you can, again, we're, our core services are covered. I mean, there's a lot of options, but you, you can choose to fund a program, you can choose to roll the heavy back, you can choose to put it in the water, you can, whatever you need to, whatever you wanna do, as long as we remain healthy in other areas, which, again, the other thing that we've been maintaining is, is keeping our fund balance at a level that's comfortable, but not overly, not overly large, but also not so little that we don't have that opportunity to have a safety net for the large rainy days.
Right. I assume that even using those two figures, five sixty and eight forty-four, um, for either water relief, uh, headly relief, either of those, that that doesn't affect the, the fund balance that we're talking about? We're still at a healthy fund balance.
Yes, Sue, are we, where are we averaging with, in sixteen and seventeen, or twenty-eight percent?
It wouldn't have, I mean, that impacts, um, to the fund balance.
Right.
Yeah.
We're, we're trying to stay around twenty, between twenty and thirty percent.
Twenty, yeah, that's perfect.
Anywhere between twenty-five and thirty.
What I would like you to do then, for the next, for the presentation, is, we know what we're gonna do with it if the road bond doesn't pass. We're gonna put it into the streets. But I'm optimistic, and, and, and I think that we should have that, a plan A, which is if the road bonds pass, then, then we have that money. And maybe you could give us some scenarios where we, uh, actually reduce, because just to remind headly, I mean, just to remind the voters and the residents, just because you approved up to five point four mils of the headly, we've always said we wouldn't use it all if we don't need it all, and it looks like there's a possibility, if we get the infrastructure bonds, that we wouldn't need it all. So could you give us some scenarios of what that could look like? Either reducing the headly amount needed for next year, uh, reducing the water, uh, rate increase that might be needed, or some, you know, potential combination of the two, uh, and maybe give us those options at the next meeting?
Yes, I can do that.
That'd be great.
That'd be great, thank you.
Anything else on the budget?
I just wanna applaud the work again. I think this is a couple of years now we've been improving this process, and you have all been wonderful with this, and I really, really do appreciate it.
It's as clear, uh, as it's.
Yeah, it is.
It really is.
As someone who has been looking at this budget since probably two thousand and six, um, this is the most transparent the budget has ever been. Um, it's clear, it's concise, you know where everything is coming from, you know where everything is going.
By department, instead of by these bizarre, uh, line items, so, um...
Well, I just wanna reiterate this, how much staff has worked on to help create that environment, and how much Plant Moran has helped with that as well, so it's been a team effort by far, and we find our decision-making is much better now as well, now that we have a clearer understanding, so.
Excellent.
But I will bring back, uh, I will bring back, uh, multiple ideas for you on the twenty, on the twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, no action is required on this this evening, right?
No, no, it's just a presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, and then the next presentation is the non-general fund budget summary is...
Together.
Huh?
I just did them together.
I thought you did, but I wanted to make sure. Uh, all right, so that is technically item F, but now we'll move on. Um, councilwoman Piana, you removed consent agenda item H, which is now, uh, regular agenda item G, uh, which is the approval of ordinance number one one five nine, amending the City of Ferndale Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty, vegetation, article three, noxious vegetation.
Thank you. Um, I pulled it off the consent agenda because I wanted to honor the work of the FESC to highlight, um, their, um, inputs and direction in, in advising what should go into updating our noxious vegetation ordinance, which sounds terrible on its face, but really what this ordinance is all about is encouraging more, uh, natural landscaping in, um, our front yards or backyards, um, with, for our properties in the city. And so, um, I really just wanted to highlight a couple points and answer your questions on behalf of the FESC, and I really see this as part of greening our community and helping lower, um, CO2 emissions, and so this is moving us in a, in a direction of increasing our city's sustainability from an environmental perspective, um, but also allowing, um, residents more flexibility, um, in terms of monitoring and regulating, um, natural landscape. So, um, I, I wrote this down. So in Derek Delacorte's, um, description of the community gardens, he said, "We don't want the community gardens to be unsightly and not managed." I would say that this is what the ordinance is trying to do, um, in balancing and encouraging more natural landscaping, but not allowing front yards to get so unruly with flowers, plants, and shrubs, that it be, looks like it's not managed. So I think that is a great balance of what the FESC tried to do here with the guidance of our lawyer, Dan Christ. Um, we also, um, contracted with some local expertise, experts, um, Millian Dean, who is a certified arborist through the South Oakland Water Community, something, South Oakland Water, oh, boy, it's late.
Sakuwa.
To provide insight on... To provide insight on what are native plantings, what are other cities doing in terms of natural vegetation, and how are they managing this through code enforcement? So, one of my goals as a councilwoman was to make sure that we're putting our code enforcers in a positive light so that they aren't making subjective decisions while out in the field and providing some guidelines about what is unsightly and not managed versus what is a beautification of the property. So, this ordinance also includes an online registration form, and the registration form is just to announce with the city that you are planning to install or have one installed of a natural landscaped yard. There's no fee, it's just to give awareness to code enforcement in the unlikely event a neighbor calls and logs a complaint about the front yard for some reason. If you're registered, the code enforcement already has that information and can help make decisions in the field without spending extra time with the homeowner or both homeowners. So, and if there's any questions, I think, Greg, you had one that you had mentioned to me earlier.
Yes. Well, I sit on the ordinance review committee, and one of the things when I look at a new ordinance is how it, how it will support the greater community. And one of the issues that I have, that I know that I brought up with you, Dan, is Section 20-45A, "Any person who is an owner of real property wishing to maintain a planned and natural landscaping area, etc." My concern is about 20 to 25% of the city are rental homes. And I want to make sure that it's not restricted that a homeowner is the only person that can go out to request this, that a person who rents a property has the ability to do this on their property. They would have to get their own agreement with their own landlord. If they do it and landlord doesn't want to deal with it, that's their issue. But I don't want to inhibit a renter from being able to take action on this.
And just, you know, through the chair, we did address that, that very concern through the definition of owner, where we specified that the owner having legal possession of the property shall include the occupant or renter of any dwelling, or of any, of any dwelling or property. Because we did specifically in our most recent draft wish to address that concern, to make sure that it was clear that it would apply not only to the homeowner, but to a renter of the property.
Okay. And somehow I missed that, probably because it was in blue and not red.
And we've been at this for nine, three.
That's true.
Just a couple of points, two points too as well. We have created a brochure that will help show what it should look like and help with tips and pointers, and that's currently being done, should be almost complete. I know Kara's been bugging me for it, because Kara is also going to help do a communications plan so people are aware of it and know how to get the brochure, know how to, you know, to go online for it. But it's supposed to help them understand a little bit more of what that should look like. And then, did you want to talk about the demonstration project?
Sure. I need to give kudos to our city manager, because she's really the one who generated this idea to do a demonstration project, and I think it's fantastic. That on the Clean the Ferndale Up Day, the FESE will have a demonstration project in front of City Hall where DPW will kindly remove some turf grass, and we will be planting in natural landscaped in a certain area following the direction of DPW. So, I think this is, again, a win-win for everybody and a good way for the city to demonstrate we're serious about trying new things and improving our sustainability for the community.
And actually, I also want to give, talk a little bit about that real quick. I know, I'm sorry. But we've worked with Lloyd at DPW, who sat down with myself and Matt Davis over at DPW, and Becky Hammond as well, who's also championing Monarch butterflies. So, we're actually going to be creating not only the demonstration project, but creating some spaces for the, whatever, what is it, the milk?
Milkweed.
And create a butterfly garden. And we're actually going to, instead of just having a plot of land in front of City Hall, create somewhat of a sitting area that shows the demonstration project, that shows the different plants as well. So, kind of a combination of a bunch of initiatives as well, and then the ability to actually be able to sit down and enjoy the garden in front of City Hall as well. So, we're very excited. Lloyd was more than accommodating and actually kind of excited about that project as well. So, a lot going on with that, and we're very excited about that.
So, I guess to summarize, turf grass is still welcome, and, you know, if you like turf grass, that's great. But if not, you want to try a natural landscaped yard, this ordinance encourages you to do so, and we provide some guidelines on how to best have a well-managed and beautiful garden.
If I may just ask a question, as defined by the ordinance to say, "Any intentional or maintained landscaping of native plants, ornamental grasses, ground covers, rainforests, shrubs, and trees." If I plant vegetable plants in my front yard, is that a planned natural landscape?
That's a great question. That was something that the ordinance wanted to leave off for right now. I don't think, if it fits in with the natural landscaped yard, I think we'll permit it. But we found that talking about edibles through the expert that was a little bit harder to define and get through, and so we wanted to get through the encouragement of the natural landscaping. But edibles, depending on what they are, could fit into a natural landscape.
I think one of the key components of that too is that there is a statement in there that it cannot attract rodents, and typically that would, so they'll have to be careful with that.
So, my second question is, is really, we're effectively talking about their front yards. If I do a planned natural landscape behind my privacy fence in my backyard, do I need to register it?
No.
No. Any questions?
No. And, well, I just also wanted to point out that one of the other things that I requested to have changed on this was the restriction of three feet from city property, from city sidewalks, etc., because I know on my street, our front yards are eight feet at best, and a lot of people like to be able to utilize their whole front yard, and you're basically cutting the front yard in half, or three of them, only three feet. So, I'm hoping that people will use, you know, natural ground cover, something that's low, you know, maybe a foot high, so that it doesn't impede foot traffic.
On that point, you'll see, the draft before council this evening does eliminate that concern that you had, councilman, but it did preserve in the front yard the restriction from a planned landscape area within three feet of the property line, the side property line.
I guess I just have a comment. Do you want to have a good emotion before that, or?
Yes.
Motion would be in order.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1159, amending the City of Ferndale Code of Ordinances, Chapter 20, Vegetation, Article 3, Noxious Vegetation.
Support.
I move by Piana and supported by Polica.
I would just, I'm supportive of this, and I really appreciate all the hard work that went into this, especially from the, all the experts and commissions involved. The only point that gives me a pause of concern is the whole registration process. I completely understand your reason for it. I just, I see it as a, I'm anxious to see how it goes, and I hope we can revisit this in a year to see if there's any issues or processes around that that may, we may want to tweak going forward.
I completely agree, and, you know, we thought this was something new to try to help address the code, balancing code enforcement, and also giving some protection to the homeowner.
Yeah, no, I'm more than willing to try it. I'm just saying, in this whole great work, there's, that's the piece that causes me a pause.
Well, and my understanding is, no one's going to be fined if they don't, you know, register online.
No, I understand.
You know, so I think it's just trying to be proactive.
Yeah.
I also think it'll be a great source. If people do register, I think it'll be easier for the beautification committee to go look at the property and give them an award.
Any other comments or concerns, questions? Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to call to council. I see our police chief, Tim Collins, is still with us. Anything for the good of the community, sir?
Nothing additional tonight, Mr. Allen.
All right. Our fire chief is also here. Chief Sullivan, anything for the community?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. Jenny, any HR department, anything from HR this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to bring you up to speed on our progress with our clinic. Our My Life Health and Wellness Center has been open now since, for about three months. We're just now getting into the groove of some more consistent, useful reporting, and I'm happy to say that in the last month, we have successfully maintained about a 55% utilization, which is actually substantially higher than what we had initially anticipated. Twelve of those visits ended up being Ferndale participants, with the majority being Madison Heights and Royal Oak, as they've been going through some specialized programs that we're looking to get involved in. I am happy to report, though, that we had absolutely zero no-shows. So, when our staff are making appointments, they are being considerate and following through with that. So, we are really, really happy with our experience. We're looking to grow our program. In addition to that, we're actually in the process of formalizing our application to apply for an award through the MML that is due the end of this month, that will showcase our collaboration as it relates to the clinic. So, we're happy about that. So, thank you for your support.
All right, sorry. I'm glad the reporting's coming through. I'm really anxious to see what we get. They are dispensing certain generic medications, correct?
We have about 168 generic medications that are being dispensed through our clinic, which we are getting, obviously, at a very substantially discounted rate. I believe since we opened, we have dispensed about just over 100 medications that people have been able to take with them at the scene, so.
And is one of the metrics that we're looking at medication compliance, so we know that they're actually taking them and getting them refilled at the right time?
Right. So, one of the key things about the clinic is the doctor who will write the script also is making follow-up appointments with those folks. And so, if it's just a cold medicine, or, you know, an antibiotic or something of that nature, maybe not necessary, but any maintenance medications, she is making those follow-up appointments prior to them leaving to take their lab work and monitor that, which will hopefully help with compliance.
Yeah, no, that's great. Yeah, and the one-offs aren't usually calculated into compliance rates, you know, either. So, my, not concerned, but it's one of the things that, as they promoted their PCMH model, that's monitored, and so they should, they should be able to report to us a percentage of folks that are compliant with their chronic condition medication.
Yep. We do have the ability to draw into the reporting in that way, follow-up visits with certain, with the patients and things of that nature. And so, we will be able to, right now, we're still really, our data is very, you know, in its infancy.
Well, yeah, and only 12 people. I mean, you know, it's hard to get congruent data, but it's, I think that's, no, I think that's terrific. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kara, anything from communications and community engagement?
Nothing, my girl, thank you.
All right. Jill, anything from the recreation department this evening?
Nothing, my girl.
Oh, all right. Derek, anything else from community and economic development?
Nothing additional.
Nothing additional. Lloyd, anything from DPW?
Yes, Mr. Allen. I know my coworkers are agents, my mom's a patient, so. Thank you, April.
He's got pictures of it.
Oh, that's it, yeah.
First of all, I would like to lament to council that the city manager outed me as a butterfly lover, because there goes my DPW image right out the window. But, in any case, the first, the first thing I'd like to let council know and the residents is that SAKWA is holding an open house in celebration of Earth Day, and that will be this Sunday from, glasses, Lloyd, from 12 to 3:00, at 995 Coolidge Highway, Troy, Michigan. There'll be a number of activities that are open to the public, even, one of which is even, they can come in and hand-sort some trash if they'd like, to just get an idea about what recycling is about on the front lines.
I'll be there. Take care, find a way.
So, if you have some time on Sunday, you're more than welcome to attend. And then I had just a very quick presentation, council's aware, particularly councilperson Polica, who's spearheaded some work at Garbert Park this weekend. I have some short slides. I'm going to go real quick. This is the previous play structure that was at Garbert Park, and here's what we're installing now. And this is only the tip of the iceberg. This should be well-ready by the ribbon-cutting ceremony on the 24th. As you can see, and council's more than aware, DPW is doing their own concrete work. Well, you're wondering why this slide is in here? Because what we do with the concrete, at least in the City of Ferndale, is we establish, we crush the concrete, and we use that, yeah, the picture's a little dark. You can see the path that we cut through Garbert Park, and what's there is about six, eight inches of crushed concrete in order to bring that cost down. This is also the rink that's at Garbert. It's going to be taken down. That's going to be a, possibly a safety town area where children can learn safe bike riding and using, use of bike lanes and that sort of thing. There's a lot of action going on in the parks in general. You're going to continue to see work as we relocate the donated play structure, and I look forward to seeing you all at the ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Very excited about the changes at Garbert Park. Great, great stuff. Thank you, Lloyd.
Is there a date for the ribbon-cutting ceremony?
24th.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Karen, anything else from finance department this evening?
Nothing.
Marnie, anything from the clerks department?
Yes, I do have one quick thing. I just wanted to announce that we are still accepting applications for election inspectors for the May 5th election, and particularly, we are in need of Republican inspectors. The state laws require that we have a balanced amount of both Democrats and Republicans to keep everything fair with polls, and we have a shortage of Republican inspectors. So, if you are interested in working with us on May 5th, Election Day, we pay $150 a day. We are looking for people with moderate to advanced computer skills, and contact the city clerk's office for more information.
Chief Collins, it could make some extra money.
Somebody else has been outing.
April, anything from the city manager, anything else from the city manager's office this evening?
Just one more thing, a friendly reminder to all of our residents, on April 29th here at City Hall at 7:00 PM will be a town hall meeting to discuss and provide information on ballot proposals number two and three, which is our street and parks millage, and the renewal for the streets and parks, as, let me back up. Proposal number two is for the heavy overlight renewal, and proposal three is the streets and parks millage. So, that will be a town hall, that will be an opportunity for our residents to ask questions and hear more about both of those proposals.
Very good, thank you. I think that's Dan Christ, although I almost didn't recognize you with the facial hair. Dan, anything from the legal department?
In disguise, very briefly, Your Honor, just wanted to bring to council's attention, since the meeting in March, the last meeting in March, Glow Night Club has filed suit against the city, as well as the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and council, and two city employees. So, that matter is proceeding, and we will be defending that in open county service court.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Protem Martin?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. Councilman Lennon?
I have nothing pertinent, other than I want to say happy birthday to my son, who turns 30 on the 14th, but where he's at, it is the 14th. He's a warm servant of his country. I know he's watching, so, happy birthday, son.
Excellent. Thank you, councilman. Councilman Polica?
I have a couple of things. As Lloyd mentioned, there was a lot of work going on at Garbert Park. I want to thank members of the Harding Park Inline Hockey Group, who came out, specifically Bruce Channel, Bill Sherwood, Steve Hurst, and Eric Belitho, for all their hard work in helping disassemble the hockey rink. They got a lot of it down, but not all of it, so I know that the DPW crew will take care of the rest of it. But they, they were able to take some of the pieces that they took off and immediately installed them at the Harding Park rink that evening. They had photos on their website, on their Facebook page. And you also mentioned Friday, April 24th, at 5:00 PM, Garbert Park, we will be celebrating the new playground equipment with a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and we will be celebrating Earth Day by planting a tree in the park as well. So, please come down to Garbert Park, 5:00 PM. I want to thank school board trustees, Nankeer Mueller and Amy Butters, for their help in getting, and I quote, "hordes of children" to the event. And I want to thank Lloyd and DPW for helping get the park ready for the event. And I apologize to councilwoman Piana for scheduling it at that date and time. She has a conference that I was not aware of and won't be able to attend, but I know you will be there in spirit.
Yeah. I can't tell you how disappointed I am.
I'm sorry. Clean the Ferndale Up is scheduled for Saturday, May 16th. We are accepting early registration online at www.cleantheferndaleup.com. Check-in and date of registration starts at Check-in and date of registration starts at eight AM on May sixteenth, and we will start the cleanup around, across the city at nine AM until noon. This year, we are adding a new component, Sacra will be here at City Hall, accepting hazardous recycling items like batteries, electronics, paint, oils, tires. So I encourage residents to take advantage of the warmy weather, start cleaning out your garages, basements, attics, bring those items that you can't put to the curb to City Hall on May sixteenth from nine to noon. And finally, at the end of March, I had the pleasure of joining Councilwoman Piana and members of the Downtown Development Authority in Atlanta, Georgia, for the National Main Street Conference. We attended a variety of sessions during the three-day conference, and I learned about several programs that I'm hoping to, well, I'm looking to investigate further that I hope will benefit Ferndale. As part of the conference, I took a day trip to Madison, Georgia, the second most historic town in Atlanta, I'm sorry, in Georgia, and the only town General Sherman didn't burn on his march across Georgia. What impressed me most about this town of four thousand residents is their ability to embrace new development. Many of the people in Madison have ancestors that go back pre-American Revolution. Back in two thousand and five, they decided to invest one point two million dollars on creating a multipurpose park and gathering space. That park was a catalyst for ten million dollars of new construction investment in residential, commercial, and office space, and they changed their height ordinance from forty feet to sixty feet to allow for a developer to build a boutique hotel and condo. The project, in short, nearly doubled the size of their downtown, and they are now working on new development west of this project. So if a city saved in the Civil War can embrace new development, I hope Ferndale will as well. That's all I have.
All right. Councilwoman Piana?
Uh, nothing this evening.
All right. I have just a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to thank the chamber, our Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce for putting on the State of the City address last week. I was privileged to be able to speak at that. I believe it, it's, the speech is actually showing on our YouTube channel, and will be up on our cable channel, so check it out if you want to hear the, the latest happenings on the State of the City, and thanks to our chamber. And then, secondly, I guess I would like to ask April, just following up on the, on the many visitors we had from the Autumn House, I guess, I didn't go on the tour a couple of years ago, but I certainly heard the invitation loud and clear, and I, I'd like to take them up on it. So could you help arrange for myself and whoever else on council or staff?
I would like to do that. Saturday would be best, but whatever, however, you know, whatever you could arrange, and I, I want to let our residents know that it is something that we take very seriously. And even though the, the Ferndale Housing Commission is not part of city government, we do appoint their board, and it, and we oversee their, the appointment of the board anyway, and it's something that's been on our radar. The conditions that we've heard about, and that you heard about tonight, are unacceptable, and council does feel a duty to make sure that that organization is run in a way that is respectful of the residents, and I, I don't think it has been. And I, I just want those residents to know, and our residents to know, that it's something that is on our radar and that we intend to take very seriously. So I appreciate the residents who came out tonight to tell us in person. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.